A little thin today, so uh we may end up banging through things. Um, Mr. Gillis not going to be here. Um, Ms. Eacockodj is not going to be here. We don't know where Frida is. And Mr. Matthews is going to be late, so. Um, so accordingly, we're going to move the fundraiser's discussion, which was something that Holly was interested in to the end.
Sure.
And we'll just kind of proceed from, from there. So, um, first item on our agenda, and I'm sorry we didn't get you a good audience, but hey, it'll be on video, so people can go and watch it on video.
Yeah, no worries.
So, year up.
So, I wanted to take just a few moments to talk to you about, uh, the conference, the AMLE conference that myself and our instructional coach Valerie Cawthorn attended in Indianapolis a couple of weeks ago. Extremely good conference, uh, probably one of the better conferences I've ever attended as an educator. And so, I just wanted to take a few minutes and just let you know what we, what we experienced and what we learned and, and what was confirmed for us as well. So, I gave you a sheet of, uh, paper here. I'm a visual person and, and so I, I always like to be able to see things. Mr. Short, I didn't give you one. Um, but, um, so I think having a visual for this conversation is really good. Uh, so neuroplasticity is something that we talk about in, in the world of education. It's, and it's around brain research and, and it's about your brain growing and making connections. And you can see at, uh, so it shows three different time periods within a person's life at birth, what those connections are right there, just beginning to form. By year six, there's a ton of connections that have been made by, by a student. And then you look at year fourteen and, and some people would say those connections are fewer. And, and one of the things that was brought to my attention during this conference is that's not true. That may be what the picture is showing, but that's not true. What's actually happening is those students around that age fourteen are pruning those connections. So, those connections are becoming stronger and, and they're understanding more about why those connections that they made at six years old are working out like they need to work out. So, and that's, that's the age group that we have, right? And we're trying to make sure that those connections and those, those, uh, connections and learning are becoming even stronger and they understand the reason why behind them. And so, um, that was something that was confirmed in, in the conference that I thought was really good. I shared this with our staff yesterday in our staff meeting now that we had yesterday afternoon. And, and so, you know, our kids need to know and understand what the boundaries are and, and at that age, uh, because in a lot of ways, they are almost like toddlers again, but just in bigger bodies. And so, and so, we're trying to help them understand that and, and realize that. So, along with that, so we talked about, uh, one of the things, the first session that I attended, I text Mr. Hargrove about this. It was such a home run of a session. We talked about how do you plan lessons that really involve that student engagement to get them to make these deeper connections? And so, that was, that was one of my first shares that I've shared with the entire staff so that they can see and understand what does that look like? Because really, when you go to school, you don't learn how to plan a lesson. That's, I mean, yeah, you write lesson plans, but you don't have a class that says that this is how you do this, this much time and so forth and so forth. So, we talked about that and what that engagement needs to look like for the middle school level. Um, another thing that, that was, uh, very evident, um, was middle school's all about transitions, right? We have them the shortest amount of time in their educational career. And it's about transitioning them from elementary to middle and making that smooth and making sure that parents understand that and make sure that students understand that and then getting them transitioned to high school where they understand what needs to happen there. And so, um, I was able to make some connections with some folks. One thing about this conference that was great is there's people from all over the United States there. I met people from Alaska, Hawaii, like, uh, literally all fifty states. There was somebody there. Um, we even talked to, just so happened we wound up in a, in a session where I sat with a group of Tennessee folks and didn't even know it until we started talking about where we were from. So, it was great to make those connections and, and talk about the similarities that we're experiencing in all of our schools. Um, but transitioning is huge. And so, we, we brought away, brought some great ideas about how we're not going to try to continue to evolve that process for us. We've started, we've done some things differently in the last couple of years. Uh, and so, uh, we're going to be looking at in the future, but how can we make that even better? And so, talking with our elementary folks and changing that up some, right? Um, but then also talking to our Raider Academy and high school, what can we make that, how can we make that transition even better? And I know Mr. Skipper's done a lot of work with that with the, the, uh, high school and beyond plan as well. So, uh, again, transitioning, engagement, uh, practical tools. Like, I can't tell you how many sessions I went in that was, here's something that you can take away today. And so, we've been sharing that with our teachers and helping them understand how to use those practical tools. Um, that conference was a home run for us. It was a home run. And here's what's great, next year it's in Nashville. I'm super excited about that because that tells me that that's something that maybe we can try to send some of our teachers to next year, uh, since it's going to be so close. So, um, so yeah, what questions do you have for me?
What is, uh, so what is the relationship between synaptic density and like cognitive function? You know, I mean, is there a correlation? I mean, you're obviously, like you said, trimming down the pathways and making it a little more efficient, but, but how do you correlate that to, you know, actual learning and what types, I'm assuming certain types of lessons and, and things like, you know, logic and rhetoric and math and stuff like that?
Right.
Might challenge people more and, and really, you know?
Well, I think, I think you just zoomed in on it, Mr. Ballard. It's about the challenge part.
Yeah.
So, our students need to, need to be challenged and that's, that's where those, those connections have got to be deeper, right? And so, so if we are appropriately challenging our students like we need to, then the connections that they're making are going to become stronger connections and that retention is going to be even more for the student. Uh, hence some of the, uh, sessions that we went to about that engagement piece of how, how do you create that engagement in a, in a middle school level, right? Um, so, so I think that's, that's where it's at.
From like rote memorization to things where you're actually thinking problems and...
Exactly, exactly. Getting them in that, in that, you know, possibility of let's do this, let's do this application stage, right? Let's not just try to memorize this, but let's apply it. Let's try to problem solve around it. And so, uh, we talk a lot about critical thinking and problem solving and, and what does that look like in an eighth grade social studies class or what does that look like in a, you know, sixth grade math class? So, um, and I will say this, there were a lot of things in that conference that we heard of folks talking about that we're already doing. So, that was great to hear that, that some of the strategies that we're already putting in place, this conference is saying, these are best practices. And so, that was, that was good to hear, uh, that, that the steps that we are making are good, sound, research-based steps.
Dr. Anderson, uh, we had a principal meeting last Wednesday. One of the topics that we shared about was productive script struggle.
Mm-hmm.
And Dr. Anderson had a huge smile on his face. And where that struggle is, it kind of hit in the wheelhouse of the, of the conference that you attended.
Yeah.
And in our December meeting, the Jimmy Anderson show will be put on at the principal's meeting. So, he'll be able to share that, uh, all those great things. But it, for me as a director, it's really exciting when you have a, a principal so excited about being at a conference and, and you could hear the excitement and the love for learning in his, in his voice when you talk to him, so.
And I'll say...
Bring it back and sharing it.
I'll say this, we were in sessions from like eight o'clock that morning till like four thirty, five o'clock in the evening. So, like, we were going all day, so don't think that we were wasting any time. Uh, but, but we, we were learning and trying to make connections with folks and so it was, it was very good, very good.
Was it just a one-day conference?
It was, it was, uh, it's actually a three-day. It was a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So, uh, so yeah, it was very good, very good.
Do we apply things like, I mean, do we actually have classes on critical thinking, logic, rhetoric, those types of things?
Well...
Will we incorporate that into other classes?
So, a, as the instructional leader in the building, that's, in my opinion, that's my job to bring back to my staff and to get them to understand and realize how that looks. And so, uh, we spend our, uh, what folks call faculty meetings, uh, those meetings that teachers attend once a month, I call them instructional meetings because I'm trying to help teachers to build their instruction for their students. And so, so that's, that's my mindset with that. And so, when we meet, like, when we're meeting with teachers today, we were talking about student work. What does that look, look like? What's really good student work that aligns with state standards, right? So, just building teacher capacity and getting them to, to grow as much as they can so that our students can perform like they need to perform.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah. And the teachers next year, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
I do, uh, although I've only landed here for six months, I appreciate Dr. Anderson's, um, commitment to building capacity in his teachers and subordinates. Um, that's what it's all about, good leadership in education. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Fascinating stuff. I thought it would just, you know, continue to get more dense. Learn something new. All right. The, uh, next item on the agenda, and, uh, get it out of the way, is the five-year strategic plan. And, uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hargrove to cover that ground.
Our five-year strategic plan, it, it basically serves as our roadmap, uh, outlines what our goals are, our long-term goals, priorities, and the actions that we plan on taking to improve student outcome to, to achieve our mission. Um, it should guide our decision-making, it should align our resources, it should foster accountability and provide a clear direction for our future as a school system. Um, for example, a family moves here, uh, they're shopping school systems for their children, they want to go on a website. Our five-year plan will be posted on our website and, um, they would find an overview of what we value in our school system. Um, Mr. Ballard and I perused the world wide web yesterday and looked at several other systems, uh, five-year strategic plan and what they look like. There are some that are much more data-driven, there are some that are about like ours, and then there are some that are much more general. In, in my humble opinion, where ours falls is right in the, in, in the middle of that. Um, but our strategic plan is like a ten-thousand-foot view of how we do business. Um, our plan does tie in with our TISA plan Dr. Cornelius spoke about at our last board meeting. So, there is some tie into that. And it also speaks to our LEA plan, which, uh, can be found on TN, Inform TN. And I have directions on how, he, he's good, on how to log in to Inform Tennessee. And that is a much more detailed plan and more of the, uh, data-driven goals that our school system has. Uh, you can go online. In fact, you can go all the way back to two thousand and eighteen. So, we, we start that process in January. So, we're getting ready to start the next year's LEA plan in, in January. Um, I want to remind everybody, this is a living document. Uh, and I'll tell you why that statement really matters in regards to accountability. Um, we're kind of at a little bit of a standstill. There's still some things in place, but we, we don't even know if there's going to be a U.S. Department of Ed next year. Well, that takes away all those federal accountability measures that is, you can find peppered throughout our five-year strategic plan. Um, so, we have that, we have the TIS designations, uh, so there's, there's no telling where we're going. As far as our state goes, we're a year away from a new governor. We're a year away from a new commissioner. Will our State Department, uh, Department of Ed claim some of those federal designations? Will they incorporate? Will they, will, we have to reinvent the wheel on state designations? We don't know. There is a ton out there. We don't know. I listened to a gentleman from our State Department of Education speak at a superintendent's meeting a couple of weeks ago and school letter grades might not even be around. Um, the gentleman made a great point as we transition, right now, our data looks like a W, okay? A W. At the top, there's a five, in the bottom, there's a four. At the top, there's a three, at the bottom, there's a two. At the top, there's a one. A lot of our school systems, the majority of our school system, you rarely find a two or a four. They're either fives, threes, or ones. Well, in attempt to make that more bell-like, they're talking, talking about implementing some different things like, um, our scores this year will count thirty-three percent into next year's. So, next year's scores will count sixty-six percent and whatever we do academically this year would be thirty-three percent. And what they're trying to do is create the bell on the bell curve. A five will be very difficult to achieve. Bless you. Um, just trying to make it look more like a bell curve. They, uh, there was talk about adding more designations, uh, outside of what we know that is a current federal designation of reward school. They were talking about adding, so there's, there's a, a lot of stuff up in the air. With saying that, do y'all have any questions on what I've talked about so far?
Mm-hmm. And just kind of where we come from, as we started the beginning of the year, we had that five-year plan that we've kind of tinkered around with for years and a bunch of bullet points and we went to that big spreadsheet where we're trying to put KPIs and...
And what made me want to cry when I...
Well, you know, we handed that to Mr. Hargrove and he took and he whittled everything down to this document, so, so it was, it was a worthwhile exercise.
Yes, ma'am. So, our strategic, our strategic plan includes our school system vision, its mission statement, our motto, you can find that on page one. The five areas that all that data whittled down to, we focused, they all start with S. Student outcomes, staff, supports, stakeholders, and safety. Those are the five areas from a ten-thousand-foot view that are important to us. Now, there are a lot of objectives that are subheadings underneath that and we'll get to that here in, in a second. Um, our goal is hopefully we can get this plan approved at the December board meeting and start working on the printing it up. We would like to have this on our website. It's real pleasing to eyes, states our mission, vision, our motto, and have what our goals and objectives are. All the things that you see in yellow have been changes to the original draft, so that's why they're in yellow. And if it's okay, Mr. Ballard, we just take a, a few minutes to peruse and if you have any questions, I'll be more than...
I figured this was going to be the bulk of the meeting, so we, let's go through it. I'm sure we got a...
Yeah, I just, we can track through there. Obviously, our first goal is our student outcomes and we want to be able to provide excellence in the equity and instructional programming to maximize our student outcomes. And then there's our objectives. I believe there are five. Now, the things you see highlighted under this goal, those are driven by our TISA and our LEA plan. You, you're going to see those again if you go on Inform Tennessee. You're going to see that within some of our goals on the plan Dr. Cornelius talked to us about in last week's board meeting. And they're real specific goals that are, are set for our young learners as well as our high school students and middle schoolers.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Under five B, talking about the, um, junior ROTC.
Yes, sir.
Um, how, how are you going to increase the total cadet enrollment if you don't have people interested in that?
Uh, that comes down to recruiting that program.
Okay.
Uh, we're, our course changes, uh, that we offer in our Raider Academy give them opportunity. In fact, we're pushing to try to make that a, an area. And we went to a session on that and they were talking about being able to use codes in different areas under general leadership. If we could have, uh, our junior ROTC as a, a course of study, that would hopefully, and then we hopefully grow the program. But, uh, in those four years, you're going to be able to check some boxes, your government box, your physical activity, those substitutes that they talked about at those, uh, at that, at our conference. We will be able to do that. But we, I mean, it's, it's over a hundred now, so we're talking about thirteen kids, but we're hoping to push to that. That's just our, the goal we set. And I took those numbers from previous recruitment years. You know, if it grew from here to here in the, the previous years, those, those just aren't denoted on this.
Okay.
There might be a thing...
I, I'm really proud of our, uh, Colonel Danz and Mr. Pat, they're, they're, they're good, our kids. Um, they work throughout our district on, on veterans day, but the colors do a real good job with that. And we have an Air Force base right near us as well.
Right.
And you've been there, so I mean, that's what you...
Yes, sir.
Kind of how you, not to elaborate on your past, but I know a little bit about it and that's what you came from and that'd be something good that you could, as a supervisor or superintendent and...
Well, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I'm sure that would be something that they would, you know, where you came from and where you started and where you're at now, that would be something very encouraging.
Yes, sir. Our military recruiters can be in our, in our high school once in a while, so...
I think it's, you know, I think it's a great program and, you know, I'd love to see more students involved in it because it's a, you know, the, the fundamentals that they learn in that, you know, with leadership and responsibility goes a long way. You know, even if they don't go into the military after school, it still will benefit them throughout their life.
Creates a great start to creating a, a healthy, sound-minded human being. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, one of the reasons I saw it did that when I went to the Veterans Day was I saw a strong sense of family among the ROTC. And the more we can foster those groups, like band, band is a family, um, the more we can foster those kind of groups, art club, um, the more kids are going to want to come back to school. And I'm real big on creating family units all through the high school as much as possible.
The relationship piece is very critical.
It's huge. It's huge to them wanting to come to school every day.
Um, the second one is staff, that's hiring and retaining high-quality employees in all departments and systems. There were no changes in the past two months on that. Three looks easy because it says supports, but it's probably the, one of the most complicated of our goals.
Going back to staff, what's our biggest challenge in, in, uh, staff?
Shortage of teachers.
Shortage of credentialed teachers or...
Shortage of sound, solid, credentialed teachers.
Just in the pool overall?
Yes, sir. That's not a Coffee County problem, that's a United States of America problem. They're talking about, um, having a two-year degree, going to get a two-year degree with a certificate. That's been kicked around quite a bit.
I saw that and I was like...
They still would have to pass the practice test, so...
Yeah, but what do you do if you don't have teachers?
I got you. And one of the things, um, I mean, I think we provide very competitive compensation and benefits in our school district and I tip my hat to you all and our district folks for making that commitment.
Career choice. I mean, definitely at our level to make a better career choice because that's really a college thing, I guess, but can we foster that into, I mean, I guess having the example of a good teacher, you know, and good principals and good teachers makes people, makes them want to go in that.
I think that's a, that's a great point as well.
Maybe sometimes the teachers need to get up and talk at career day too instead of just facilitating it.
That's true. That's true.
Don't we have something in our CTE program to...
We, we do. Ms. Abby Carden or Abby Lynch, uh, she teaches it.
Yeah.
And at one time, she was a home ec teacher and we got in, which I think's a good investment. Uh, I like to coordinate and get out in front of our might love two plus two program and start recruiting and soon we...
But even, even in middle school, you know, you're thinking along those lines.
Well, I got to speak to that during our CTE. I got to speak to nine groups and it was interesting. Um, didn't talk about the administrative and just talked about teaching and more about outcomes and improving others and having a service heart.
How many letter of, of intents did you get signed that day?
I should have done that. If you'll sign this paper right here, we'll have you some homework help and kind of promise them, yeah, that's good. Uh, the go, third goal is the supports and that one's a little more complicated because you're going to see budget, professional development, capital projects, and I change, uh, we changed the wording in our capital projects and included safety in there as a part of that. Uh, technology, nutrition, and tutoring. At the, the tutoring section was added on.
And when we were looking through these things ye, yesterday, a lot of school districts have, have these broken out into separate areas too, so, so that's kind of, we're kind of consolidating it here, so...
Yes, sir.
But I find that...
Stakeholder involvement, um, I believe we, we lean hard on social media and our communication platforms, uh, Dojo, Remind, School Messenger, and the district website, and also our yearly Title I and parent surveys we do in the fall in the first semester. And it includes a rationale for, for all of these objectives. And the last one is safety. The one add, we had added in there was, um, staff mental health as well as student mental health, trying to implement evidence-based type program to assist us with that.
You know, it's, it's interesting and, and you guys were at that, uh, pre-convention legal workshop too where they had the discussion, said in the last three to five years, they have noticed a big spike in threats and student discipline issues. And I don't know if that's true here or not, or, or, um, but it was kind of, it was, there was a good discussion on it, you know, with, with the lawyers, you know, and...
What were those numbers again? What were those numbers you said?
They said the last three to five years, so...
And just an increase?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
An increase and...
Do you have a principal? Dr. Anderson, you mind commenting on that from your perspective?
Discipline?
Yes, sir. Just student behavior in general.
Yeah, in general, yeah. I, I would say in the last three, five years, it definitely has, you know, I mean, it's just, I don't know.
That was like, Mr. Ballard was saying, it's, uh, one of the things that across the state, it wasn't just here, it's, it's across the state.
That was everybody, yeah. So, and I'm assuming it's not just Tennessee either.
Yes, sir. Yeah. That was a, a big part that, you know, when the attorneys notice it.
Yeah.
It's, and there he's an attorney for our state, you know, across the state of Tennessee, Mr. Ballard, and that's a, that's, it's a pretty big statement.
So, hmm, what's happened in the last three to five years is fairly... So, hmm, what's happened in the last three to five years that's fairly significant? It could have caused that. I'll just pose the question.
So on December's board meeting, we'll, I'll recommend approving, the approval of our, in their discussion, whatever, whatnot, we can do that. And then hopefully, Ms. Melissa is going to help doll it up and get it online and make it look really, really nice. I didn't ball and told her, as you're saying, she already knows, we've already discussed it. And some of the ideas about putting it online and the presentation of it.
That's why, you know, and the safety, going back to the safety thing, it's, you know, I mean, based on that trend, we gotta really, you know, anticipate that that's probably gonna continue and so safety becomes, you know, a huge issue.
You know, looking at this, just me thinking and listening, I mean, we can move the order of these. I mean, is this, do we need to move safety from Goal Five to Goal One?
How much money have we spent in the past two years or even the last year on safety here?
A lot.
An awful lot. It's been a good investment?
Oh, no, I'm not saying it's not an event, I'm just.
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying? For people at home that's watching.
I don't have that number in front of me.
Could we get that?
I don't see why not, no.
Yeah, I think it'd be something that our constituents would like to know, you know, how much money and effort that we're putting toward our school systems to know how much that we're spending to, for the safety of our students, you know, for them to know, you know, like, you know, when you talk about it, well, what are you spending? You know, how much of our money are we actually putting, you know?
Right.
I mean, that's a good way to get at it because, you know, we can't talk about a lot of the safety stuff.
That's right. We can't, but we can tell them how much we spent.
Exactly.
And that's their money, you know, and we get a lot of questions, a lot of times of asking, you know, how much money have you spent? You know, how much money are we spending?
And we can find that out. That's a great question and.
That would be something that, and a lot of people are just now, since, you know, we've started it, a lot of people don't know that our budget's fifty-three million dollars a year.
Right.
You know, they wanna know, we're getting more, or I am, I'm getting more and more questions of, you know, how much money are we spending? What are we, what are we spending it on? And since that we've started asking these questions and they're, you know, they're beginning to be more, want to be more informed about what's going on and, and it's my job, you know, and I'm sure it's everybody else's too, to let them know what they're getting.
As we move farther down the budget development road, which may look very different this year.
Yes, sir.
We'll all be part of that and.
Yes, sir.
And I think that will be very enlightening. I'm in the process of integrating the last program, Safety Part. We have trainings in December and in January on implementing those pieces. We spend quite a bit of time on safety and I'm not ashamed of that and.
No, I don't think any of us are. I think that's something we're very, very proud of.
It's not, we don't video that and we do those for good reasons too.
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, looking at this, I really believe that in the, with today's climate, that the, the safety ought to be bumped up to Goal Number Two, right behind the outcome, you know, student outcomes.
I concur.
You know, because everybody's worried about, you know, about the safety of their children, you know, and I really think that that ought to be right behind student outcomes. Not that it's any more important than any of the rest of them, but that, you know, it's visual.
Yes, sir. I concur. I think that's a great idea.
I mean, like last night, we went to our basketball game. I had several people that thanked us for our bleachers. Several people that said, hey, the window film on the doors, you know, well, that's awful nice. What did that cost? You know, that's, that's what, you know, if you go to these ballgames and stuff, and I try to go as many, and so do you. You get these questions and we all, we all get these questions and they really like it, but it's also a safety issue, you know, and we've done it for safety and.
And as we present those numbers, you're just gonna get a lump sum because.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, you know, percentage of the budget, what are we spending?
Right.
You know, percentage of our budget on safety, you know.
And we have some, probably some projected numbers as well.
Right.
Well, we cover that and, you know, we approve it in different board meetings, so it's all there, you know, so.
But they don't have that, they don't have that breakdown that we do.
Yeah, I get that.
We've got a piece of paper in front of us and a lot of them don't, so.
Go back and watch season one, episode three of the school board meeting. Window film edition.
Catch it.
It's out on Apple.
Yeah, catch it. Out on Apple Plus.
All right, if it ever gets on Apple Plus, I want my own makeup artist.
All right, so this is going to be, to approve is gonna be on the December agenda. So if there's any changes, or, you know, you take it home and look it over and see anything, you know, we'll hear from Holly and Keri and Robert and Frida too. But it'll be to approve on the, on the December. And, you know, that's not to say it's set in stone. It's a fluid document and we can, we'll pull it out. You know, I think the state says we gotta look at this every, hey Frida? Every two years. Oh, that's right. You missed the exciting part, the strategic plan.
And Mr. Ballard, as our accountability goals and targets become more clear in the future, I mean, we can adjust our, our strategic plan to that.
So that's, that's in there, Frida, and we're gonna vote on it and then try to approve it.
Now, this document is shared with you all. If you make changes, just don't use yellow, use another highlight color or recommendations below it. You just use a different color, if you don't mind. That just helps me track. I got you. Well, we were tracking our leadership team. It's a long story, but I'm glad.
I understand.
Yeah, anyway.
That's all our colored pens.
Yes.
You've done a great.
That's brain-based learning.
You've done a great job getting this done. Appreciate it very much. That's more than we've had in a while and really appreciate your time.
This is really, from what we had before, this is, you know, simplified, but more to the point and covers what's important. All right. Any other comments on the strategic plan? All right. Next up, we're gonna move fundraisers down till Holly can get here and we're gonna talk about flag football, so that's. Mr. Hargrove begin too.
Okay.
I think pretty much everything is, is Mr. Hargrove.
Yeah, it is, but those were things that have come up in our board meetings. Earlier this year, our athletic director, one of our two athletic directors, Brandon McQuarter, sent out a girls' flag football interest survey via email. And around a hundred and thirty-ish females reacted to that, to that initial email. Last month, our AD sent out emails to those same one-hundred-and-thirty girls. And you have a sheet in front of you. Looks like this. Has to bring it with you. Mr. Coon, you may have to share with Mr. Hanser.
I'll share with Plaidus.
That's it right there. There you go, Miss Ben. We ended up with forty-eight people returning that email. One thing that I found interesting, the class breakdown, it's pretty balanced. Eleven seniors, ten juniors, sixteen sophomore, and eleven freshmen. The other thing I found interesting is shared their multi-sport athletes. So we had forty-eight end up returning the emails and we felt like those girls were a little more serious about playing. You also have the projected budget. And you look at, I know that's another fundraising event. And if we decide we wanna move forward with this, my recommendation would be that we do it as a club sport first. And the reason I say that, we have a ton of young ladies that are playing multiple sports. And we're gonna, I would rather see how that flies before we commit to making it T double S double A sanctioned sport, where we play with those. That comes with some budget changing in our athletic budget. Right now, there are thirteen shares of our minor sports that are getting shares from our revenue-generating sports and that would add another, another team to that, so an additional weight or cost from our, from our money-generating sports. But those are the, the numbers on fundraising and I appreciate Mr. McQuarter taking the time to price some of these things for the flag football as far as budgeting and moving forward. But you see a lot of the sports that our football would be in conflict with would be girls' softball, track, and tennis. If we could play and conflict's not a problem with that. I think we, if that's the way you all, we wanna move forward on this, my recommendation in December's meeting will be we start a girls' flag club football team for this spring.
Now, where would get opponents? Are there other clubs?
Yes, sir.
Do they typically play like on Saturdays or do they play during the week or?
During the week. I'm not exactly sure, but I can find out for you by December.
I'm just curious as, you know.
No problem.
Do you know if, how many of the girls that are interested are doing other sports? Be interested to know that.
Yes, ma'am. If you look at the bottom of that sheet I gave you.
Okay.
And it gives you, there are seven of those girls that are in fall sports, eight in winter sports, and eight in spring, which five tracks, three tennis.
I think, Mr. Hargrove, from, as our previous conversation that we've had in talking to other T double S double A officials, I think this is a sport that's actually taken off. As you know, and if you look in, if you go to the T double S double A website and you look up girls' flag football for our people on YouTube land, you can actually look up around the Memphis area, the Nashville area, and the Knoxville area. Knoxville, Memphis, and Nashville, and you can see just about every school in those areas are, have flag football. I mean, there's not very many schools at all that does not have it. Schools that are in our area that are, that have it are McMenville, or Warren County. Van Buren County has girls' flag football and I believe Columbia. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hargrove, I don't know if you've looked at it or not, but I've looked at it with one of our friends and that is a T double S double A official. And it's a sport that is taking off in leaps and bounds. And I don't think it'd take very long for this to take off because I've had several, as I brought it up in our board meeting, that has asked about this and was very interested in it. And as we, as you see, we've got forty-eight, so.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, that's pretty substantial.
Well, it speaks to Ms. Injits' comment a while ago about being connected to something and having, building relationships with others.
Yep.
And people that are connected to things that are bigger than them are generally more successful people, so.
Is this a spring sport?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So really, if it don't affect eight, eight are involved in other spring sports?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure that's a capo, that's totally expected fundraiser, be five thousand, an extra zero on that.
Fifty thousand.
Well, it's just fifty thousand, Ms. Frida.
You can do that in a weekend.
Just place decimal point. So what about coaching?
We'll post a position and interview coaches like we.
So that would be a cost too that would be added to this, right?
The stipend fund?
Not necessarily. We don't play pay club sports.
Okay.
But moving forward, you know, that club sport organization could raise money for that. But moving forward, just the investment in it, let's see how year one goes. If it takes off, we can jump, have a much better plan, put it in a budget, that type of stuff.
One of the things that we would not have as much trouble on with girls' flag football is the travel. There's not very much equipment that you have to travel with, so you don't have to have as much. You could do it actually in a van or, I think we have two Suburbans. There's not a whole lot of equipment that you would have to take.
And we would have a year to plan that too.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, as a club sport, the travel will be on the parent. I mean, we play an eight-game schedule, you know, see the interests and hopefully it takes off. Bring that up and we'll have that on December's meeting and.
That's a base something, try to get started for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year?
Yes, sir.
Or this spring?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
We'll be passed. All right.
Those are all great, great questions and comments. That's fundraising there.
And we, we need to approve a club sport like that at the board meeting, at the board level?
I think there is a policy on club sports. Go ahead.
I think that's what we did with the archery the couple of times ago.
We did.
One of the things that Mr. Hargrove did say was about posting position for the coach. Normally, in the past, we have not posted positions for a club sport coach. So I, I mean, if he chooses to go that direction, then we will, but normally we have not done that.
And outside of the process, and Mr. Shores is right, I think it's pretty important that we get the right person for this one, getting it kicked off.
Yeah, that's important for the sustainability of it. If you get the wrong person leading it, then it's gonna leave a bad taste in parents' mouths and, you know, it'll go away.
But Mr. Shores is correct, so we may have to think outside the box there.
Well, who helped get it together?
Ma'am?
Who was the person that helped get it together and that?
Gathered all that data? Athletic director. Well, that, it will transition to the other athletic director because he's the spring, the fall semester athletic director.
But we do have a football co, assistant coach on staff that.
Potentially interested, yes, sir.
That was a girls' flag football coach previously.
Yes, sir.
Really?
Seems like that's a built-in solution.
May, maybe.
Imagine that.
All right. Next item up then is registration day.
All right. I've kicked this around a lot in my head for a while. And what we're talking about registration day is the first day of school is a two-hour day. And I know that practice has gone on in Coffee County schools for a while. So I went to the streets. I went to. I went to every school except for, for the high school and one of our elementary schools. And in fact, I knocked on Ms. Matthews' window one time, didn't realize it was her at the Raider Academy. And I, I asked her parents, I wanted her parents' opinion of the first day of school. I found out folks were divided into three groups. The older you got, the more in the middle and didn't care. By the time you got to middle school or especially Raider Academy, they were good with it because they can see, I guess they can see light at the end of the tunnel. The elementary, uh, you found a lot more, I like it like it is. And oddly enough, that were people that were younger. And then we have more experienced people. Uh, generally said they, I would really prefer a whole day. It's hard working, hard getting them back and forth. Some of the dilemmas that were, were faced there. But, um, my rationale is assisting our work parents. Students get a full day under their belt for procedures and all the other great things that go on in our school, they get a trial run at that and they're further on down the road on day two than they would have been. And our pre-K and our kindergarten students would still have phase in days. They, they still phase in. But in full transparency, uh, there's probably a, a little bit of pushback from our faculty and staff, uh, that probably aren't crazy about the idea and I am very respectful of that. I get that side. I, I would just like you all's opinion on it. In creating a two-hour day, instead of having the two-hour day, uh, having it as a, as a three o'clock regular, three o'clock full day of school. And the reason I bring that up is in December, Mr. Shores and the calendar committee gathered, he's going to present a calendar. And if that's one thing we, you know, depending on where we land on this and exchanging of ideas and what your thoughts are on it, makes way a decision one way or the other. And that way, we can get our calendar right and that's one thing we won't have to worry about on our calendar in December. If you notice, there's a theme here, Mr. Ballard, sowing the seeds for December's meeting.
Might be a long meeting.
Myself, I, you know, I kind of like the full day from the aspect of, uh, you know, one, it helps the, the parents that work, y- you know, they're, but two, uh, the students that, especially the older students that, that, uh, I guess really going, you know, that change classes, you know, that would be a good time for them to all experience, find out where their classes are in the buildings, you know, that way, day two, half you student population's not late to class.
Right.
You know, um, I can see the benefit in that. You know, um, I mean, myself, I'd, just to be honest, even when my kids were in school, I always wondered why first day of school was an abbreviated day. I mean, it just never made sense to me.
I think some of our, our, our staff and teachers, um, push back on it and I get it. I, I do, I do understand this. We do so much training and so many things with our, our, our staffs during in-service that I think there's an element of not being or feeling prepared that gives them another three-fourths of a day to do that. But in saying that, in my eyes, we also take the next day off, uh, with our students. Uh, that doesn't mean our teachers and faculty are sitting around doing nothing because they're not, but it does allow a, a day in between to adjust and, and do some things. But, I mean, I'm very respectful of our teachers and, and in that aspect of it. But m- my decision was based on, in exploring this, was based on what's best for our kids. And if it gets our kids further down the line, then we can help our working parents.
What day of the week do we typically start?
What week?
What, what day of the week? Is it Monday or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, isn't it?
The, the, one that you're going to be seeing coming up, uh, that's going to be on the next board meeting agenda, is set for August the second, registration day. August the third would be a day for in, well, not in service, but admin day. And then on the fourth would be the first, um, full day, or second full day, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, sometimes it, it just depends on how the calendar falls. Sometimes it's a little bit later in the week and we might have registration day on Wednesday, then Thursday, no kids. Usually, we don't do that because one day on Friday, th- it doesn't make sense.
Right.
So, usually, it might be Tuesday being the registration day.
I, I tend to agree to, uh, Mr. Hargrove on, a lot of our students put all of that time on their parents or grandparents to pick them up because a lot of people are working. So, a lot of times, you know, you've got grandparents picking them up or having to take off a day of work and it's costing them money. You know, our bus drivers, we, we got to think about them as well. It costs just as much to, to hold them a whole day than to run them twice within two hours. So, um, I, I kind of agree that, you know, it would be, I'm, I'm more of a, in, in favor of going a whole day myself. I've kind of always wondered, you know, why we did that even since, you know, we were kids, we did that. And that's always been a question with all the parents and grandparents that usually ended up taking them because their, their parents was working, you know.
And based on your survey, some, some group isn't going to be happy no matter what.
Yes, sir. The other thing, this wouldn't take place next school year. I mean, we're a calendar ahead, it would be for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year.
Okay, I guess I'm going to be the devil's advocate here.
Please.
As a teacher, the former teacher, the first day is chaotic and, uh, those, that will mean that those teachers will have to have lesson plans in place all day, you know, when those kids hit the classroom the first day. Particularly at the high school because, you know, they'll be going into their classes and staying in there and entire, out, you know, hour, whatever timeframe it is. So, the teachers would have to be prepared to hit the road that first day. That's one of the thoughts I had. And then another thought is if we're looking at parents' convenience, then what about that out, that two hours before Christmas? I mean, you know, the kids, it's abbreviated day also. So, if we're going to use the reasoning, uh, of, of that, then that goes into that day also.
Yes, ma'am.
You see what I'm saying?
No, without a doubt. And I, and I, I think we said the same thing, just said it differently on the teachers.
Right.
I get, and, and as a former administrator, you know, we try to be as a building lea- uh, leader. You're trying to, to balance, you want teachers' time in their classrooms, in the ability to set things up, get things organized, get names on desks, do all the things that, that to get the ship off the ground. I understand that. It would just push it up a day.
And do they have, the teachers have a day prior to that to, to get ready for it? Because a lot of times, you know, it's in service where they're not actually in their classroom, getting prepared for that first day of school. That, that would be very important, in my opinion, that they had time to do that. Because, you know, you just, when you start teaching, it, it, you've got to be prepared for them, you've got chaos all day. If you don't have something for them to do or, so that would be very important that the teachers at least have a day in their classroom prior to that first day of school, just getting ready for those students.
Sure. I appreciate that, especially from a former educator.
And that's, that's just my thoughts and, and I would certainly hate to see us take away that two hours on Christmas because that, you know, the, usually, that's always been a, a, um, perk, I guess, for, maybe not, even for the kids, I guess, not necessarily for parents, but because they're so excited about Christmas vacation and everything goes on like a couple hours. But then again, you go back, a lot of them don't show up on that day.
One, one of the things that changed, this happened several years ago, uh, before Christmas, used to be whenever you were teaching, one hour. And it got changed to two hours because one hour wasn't quite enough time to, to do the party.
I only remember it an hour.
One hour wasn't enough to get the parties in. So, now there's two hours, they're not supposed to be doing parties earlier that week, it's supposed to be held until the, that Friday. And, and that's the reason why, is that you have enough time and you're not wasting your time on an instructional day.
Party day.
Well, you, you're going to have Christmas parties with kids, so.
Oh, and, and that's not a problem. I was just saying, you know, if we're looking from, from a parent's standpoint, then, then they need to be in school all day that day too.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Well, I have to back the teachers too. Because there's just something psychologically helpful for it. You get them in and then you know you're going to get that break that afternoon to think things through to, it just helps.
It, it sure does. I, I think the part I struggle with on making the decision is we have an entire day the next day to get yourself together for that. There is a two-hour day, an entire day of gathering ideas and thoughts and then we hit it, we hit it running, but I appreciate everybody's opinion. I really do. It, it, and if I didn't, I wouldn't have asked for it. But that's the struggle in my mind for all the things that you all have talked about.
Well, could you compromise it? Could you go to a four-hour day?
I think, uh, we, we actually discussed that a little bit, uh, it, under, in my direction with our, our team at the central office. And we felt like if you're going to one, you might as well go to three, um.
The other thing you're going to run into is, is lunches. When you start getting into, anytime you start dealing with lunches, it changes the whole dynamics, e- even on snow day. One of the first questions is, h- how's this going to affect lunchtime? Can we get it done before lunch or can we wait till after lunch? Lunch is always, so when you do four hours, you are falling into that lunch time period, which can get difficult.
Most of the schools are running lunches and shifts, right? So.
Yes.
And the, and the other part of, a part, other part of that conversation, Mr. Shores' comment made me, uh, remember it, is once you get students off campuses at one o'clock, once you get buses run, your teachers, your principal only has a, a small thirty, forty minute window, or teachers only have a small window to really achieve some of those things that you talked about, Miss Rita. You know, it just makes it, it gives it a short time to do that. But I appreciate your input and I will continue to prey on it.
You basically got about as divided as you. So, it's consistent anyway.
We didn't have it all.
That's okay, I appreciate your input.
Well, with, with that, um, I think we're going to take a short break. I mean, we got like, I guess, light hors d'oeuvres, I guess is what you'd call it, so not a full meal necessarily, but, but, uh, let's do that before we get into these last few items and, and, uh.
I, I do want to say I enjoyed my conversations with our families immensely. And one thing I also noticed, the younger crowd, a lot of folks were mostly on their cell phone, but the more experienced people that were waiting in line generally had a book out, found that interesting.
There you go.
But I enjoyed my talk with folks.
All right.
I bet they wondered what you were doing.
Go grab something to eat more sometime.
Probably wondered who the madman was and the tweed coat running out. Probably wondered who the madman was in the tweed coat running around.
Welcome back after a brief intermission. Many thanks to Melissa for providing the food. Once again, she did an excellent job, so she feeds us well. So, next item on the agenda is the organizational chart. And Ms. Tar Grove, back over to you.
Everybody has a copy of the revised organizational chart? And I appreciate Mr. Damewood and Ms. Morland's assistance with this. The names have been added, and I believe some of the lines have, in my estimation from our committee meeting, have kind of been cleaned up a little bit. Also, as part of our organizational chart, you'll find a yellow folder. Within that, and that will give you a greater detail in names of subordinates as well. And last but not least, we also have a couple of notebooks, and which Ms. West-Morland will be able to allow you to peruse through it, and those are job descriptions. So, we have a broad organizational chart. We have the names of the subordinates and who they belong to. And if you would like to see the job description, we have two books in the central office here that you're more than able to look at. Just contact us, and we'll have them ready for you to look at. And we will post this organizational chart on our school website.
All right.
Our system website, sorry.
I do have to say, you were absolutely correct when you talked about it in the board meeting, is that org charts are biblically correct. It comes from Exodus 18, where Moses' father-in-law taught him how to... Moses' father-in-law Jethro taught him how to do org charts, so, and organizational structure. So, it's... That's the first recorded org chart there in the Bible. So, I think that's always fascinating when you look at org charts. But any questions or revisions? I know you talked about this in the committee meeting... Salary and compensation, I think.
We sure did. And we... Some of the suggestions, we cleaned up some of the positions, and we've added names under the supervisor headings. You won't find everyone's names, because it would virtually be impossible to draw this. There's not a piece of paper big enough to get all the lines drawn. But this is our leadership, kind of breakdown of that.
Have you ever considered a different type of organizational chart? I know at one time, we had a director that proposed that there would be the director of school, and then there would be assistant deputy of... Assistant deputy director for instruction. Assistant deputy for food service. Assistant deputy for transportation. In other words, everybody was under the direction of the director, and was on the same level. And one person was appointed as the person that would take your place if you were absent from the office.
Right.
I mean, there's different ways of...
Yes, ma'am.
...of doing things.
The committee meeting, we talked about spherical... I mean, there's 100 different ways to do it, like you were mentioning, different ways. But I think... I think that group, we landed just on the traditional linear version.
Yeah, it's still fairly flat chart, I mean...
And we color-coded, added some additional colors to it as well.
Oh, I noticed that the director of attendance, Dr. Cornelius, he does not... He will not serve directly to you?
He does.
No, it's through the deputy director.
Well, if you follow the line, it goes straight up to me. You see what... It goes through the director through me.
The way it's coded, it looks like the deputy director...
Yes, ma'am.
...is over maintenance, coordinating school health, director of nutrition, director of attendance, and supervisor of transportation.
He does. Our deputy, Mr. Shores, does handle all that. That doesn't mean that I'm hands-off with that. I have a hand-in on that as well. And conversely, on the blue side of it, or the left side of the sheet that are directly under me, Mr. Shores takes part in those as well, when time allows.
Okay. I guess I'm just... I guess I keep looking back to how it used to be. The deputy director was Dr. Powell, and I don't recall ever having to go through him for instruction. And, you know, it was just directly to the director. And the deputy director was out to itself, and all the others, you know, served directly to the director of school. But that's just...
Yes, ma'am.
...just what I remember.
I would think that would be a little... Were the schools... How big were the schools then, three down the school?
Not the same. It hadn't been that long ago.
It seems like it was overwhelming. We don't want to kill him off the first.
No, it's okay. I... Everybody's eye looked at things a little differently, and...
Well, if they're... You know, if these people are doing... If they're all directors, they're not going to become... You know, you're going to give them autonomy to do what they need to do, and there's not that much that they're going to have to, you know... You're going to have to worry with.
Yes, ma'am. On Mondays, we all meet collectively. There are some of those supervisors that are not part of our Monday meeting, but we collaborate weekly. Talk about what's going on in the individual departments. You know, you brought up Dr. Cornelius. He talks about all things attendance, all things coming down the road. So, we kind of share through collabora... Collaboration. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But just looking at the chart, it looks like that Dr. Cornelius serves under the direction of the deputy director, and then... Then you. And by looking at... Is that the way you see it, Dr. Cornelius? I don't know if you've even seen it or not.
If you look here, I have bold lines on this side. I have a bold line through our deputy on this side as well.
Right, so he would need to be out to the side. And also, on the CTE director, Skipper, is he on the same level as the other directors at the central office?
He does receive a supervisor's salary. And this goes back to what we were talking about at our salary and compensation meeting. There are a lot of things that are shared and overviewed and overlooked, like a lot of those people underneath Mr. West-Morland are not in the building. But ultimately, he's going to be the one they end up answering to. I do think there's probably some things that our building principals are going to guide them on, and they're going to operate as part of that school community. But by the same token, when it gets to a level in this... In that department, it's going to go to Mr. West-Morland. You brought up Dr. Cornelius. Dr. Cornelius has... Underneath him, the school registers. Well, those school registrars are going to work for the principal. He is... Oversees all parts of that, but their immediate supervisors are the principals. It just... And it came up in the last meeting. It's a little more complicated than just a few lines and a...
Well, I think what we were talking about before, you know, Ms. Tar Grove, was if you're not a supervisor, then why are you getting supervisor pay? If you don't have nobody to supervise, like our CTE director, why are we paying him a stop and to supervise people that there's not anybody to supervise?
Okay, that... You're speaking to the statement I just made about...
Right.
Because you know Mr. Skipper does supervise. He supervises all things CTE, but by the same token, that CTE director that... Or those CTE teachers are also going to answer to a principal as well. But if they have anything to... Any questions about CTE funding, CTE requirements, CTE regulations, I bet they find Mr. Skipper first.
So, the principals are on the same pecking order as the directors? I mean, you know...
They're just part of the leadership.
So, the principals would...
Train.
...be directly under your supervision?
Yes, ma'am.
Along with... Along with Mr. Skipper.
Yes, ma'am. And we're going to keep Dr. Cornelius in play, because it's... I'm agitating him a little bit. I mean, he is as well, but Mr. Shores, if it's something in transportation that comes to the office, I bet Mr. Shores is going to see it before me. Now, if Mr. Shores is out of the building, Ms. Frida, I bet I deal with it. Conversely, on the other end, if there's something going on at a school, and a principal calls here asking for me, and I'm out of pocket, I bet Mr. Shores talks about it. Mr. Shores and I meet every morning and every afternoon, so we can make sure all our bases are covered, and do our very best to do that.
So, Ms. Cotton now is under deputy director?
Yes, ma'am, and under me as well.
Yeah, I know all of them. You know, everybody's under him.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Garner, she's on the same level as Ms. Cotton?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. She hires and supervises our nurses, although our nurses also answer to a building-level principal. It just gets so complicated, I don't know if I could draw it.
Well, you know, it's the same. You know, it's, of course, the director of elementary, you know, is Ms. Sasmore. Well, she's not... You know, she goes to the principal, so all the rest is the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess, in layman's terms, I guess, Ms. Tar Grove is out in the civilian world. Let's say the civilian world.
You should just say, "We're a military." No, I'm just kidding. It's all right.
You got... You got lead men. You've got a lead man for stuff like that.
Right.
And you're not paying them for a supervisor.
Right.
They go to that lead man, but they're not getting a supervisor paid.
Right.
So, that's, you know... That's the question I think a lot of people's going to have whenever they see this. If they... If a lot of people did get to see this, they would ask that same question.
Oh, it's going online. They'll get to see it.
Oh, I know, yeah. It's got to be approved by us, but...
Uh, that there would be the director of school and then there would be assistant deputy of de- assistant deputy director for instruction. Assistant deputy uh for food service, assistant deputy for transportation. In other words, everybody uh was under the direction of the director and was on the same level. And one person was appointed as the person that would take your place if you were absent from the office.
Right.
I mean, there's different ways of-
Yes, ma'am.
-of doing things and um-
The committee meeting, we talked about spherical, um, I mean, there's di- a hundred different ways to do it, like you were mentioning, different ways, but I think, I think the, that group, we landed just on the traditional linear version.
Yeah, it's just still a fairly flat chart, I mean.
And we color coded, added some additional colors to it as well.
Oh, I noticed that the director of attendance, Dr. Cornelius, he, he does not, he will not serve directly to you?
He does.
No, it's through the deputy director.
Well, uh, if you follow the line, it goes straight up to me. You see what?
Well-
It goes through the director through me.
The way it's coded, it looks like the deputy director-
Yes, ma'am.
-is over maintenance, coordinating school health, director of nutrition, director of attendance, and supervisor of transportation.
He does. Our, our deputy, Mr. Shores, does handle all that. That doesn't mean that I'm hands off with that. I have a hand in on that as well. And conversely, on the blue side of it, or the left side of the sheet that are directly under me, Mr. Shores takes part in, in those as well, when time allows.
Okay. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm just, I guess I keep looking back to how, how it used to be. Uh, the deputy director was Dr. Powell, and I don't recall ever having to go through him for instruction. And uh, you know, it was just directly to the director. Uh, and the deputy director was out to itself and all the others, you know, served directly to the director of school. But that's just-
Yes, ma'am.
-just what I remember.
I would think that would be a little, were the schools, how big were the schools then, three down the school?
Not the same, it hadn't been that long ago.
It seems like it was overwhelming. We don't want to kill them off in the first.
No, it, it, it's okay. I, 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 everybody's eye looked, looked at things a little differently and-
Well, if they're, you know, if these people are doing, if they're all directors, they're, they're not going to become, you know, you're going to give them autonomy to do what they need to do, and there's not that much that they're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to worry with.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, on Mondays, we all meet collectively.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there are some of those, the supervisors that are not part of our Monday meeting, but we collaborate weekly. Um, talk about what's going on in, in the individual departments. You know, you brought up Dr. Cornelius, he talks about all things attendance, all things coming down the road. So, we kinda share through collabora- collaboration. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but just looking at the chart, it looks like that Dr. Cornelius serves under the direction of the deputy director and then, then you. And by looking, is that the way you see it, Dr. Cornelius? I don't know if you've even seen it or not.
If you look here, I have bold lines on this side, I have a bold line through our deputy on this side as well.
Right, so he would need to be out to the side. And, and also on the CTE director, Skipper, is, is he on the same level as the, um, other directors at the central office?
He does receive a supervisor's salary. And this goes back to what we were talking about at our, our salary and compensation meeting. There are a lot of things that are shared and overviewed and overlooked, like, a lot of those people underneath Wes, Mr. Westmoreland are not in the building. But ultimately, he's going to be the one they end up answering to. I do think there's probably some things that are building principles, are going to guide them on, and they're going to operate as part of that school community. But by the same token, when it gets to a level in this, in that department, it's going to go to Mr. Westmoreland. Um, you brought up Dr. Cornelius. Dr. Cornelius has, um, underneath him, the school registers. Well, those school registrars are going to work for the principal. He is, oversees all parts of that, but their immediate supervisors are the principals. It just, it, and, um, it, it came up in the last meeting, it's a little more complicated than just a few lines and a-
Well, I think what we were talking about before, you know, Ms. Hargrove was, if you're not a supervisor, then why are you getting supervisor pay? If you, if you don't have nobody to supervise, like our CTE director, why are we paying him a stop and to supervise people that there's not anybody to supervise?
Okay, that, uh, you're speaking to the statement I just made about-
Right.
-of, because you know Mr. Skipper does supervise, he supervises all things CTE, but by the same token, that CTE director that, um, or those CTE teachers are also going to answer to a principal as well. But if they have anything to, any questions about CTE funding, CTE requirements, CTE regulations, I bet they find Mr. Skipper first.
So, the principals are on the same pecking order as, as the directors? I mean, you know?
They're just part of the leadership.
Uh, so the principals would-
Train.
-would go, be directly under your supervision?
Yes, ma'am.
Along with, along with Mr. Skipper?
Yes, ma'am. And we're going to keep Dr. Cornelius in play, because it's, I'm agitating him a little bit. I mean, he is as well, but Mr. Shores, if it's something in transportation that comes to the office, I bet Mr. Shores is going to see it before me. Now, if Mr. Shores is out of the building, Ms. Frida, I bet I deal with it. Conversely, on the other end, if there's something going on at a school and a principal calls here asking for me, and I'm out of pocket, I bet Mr. Shores talks about it. Mr. Shores and I meet every morning and every afternoon, so we can make sure all our bases are covered and do our very best to do that.
So, Ms. Cotton now is under, uh, the deputy director?
Yes, ma'am, and under me as well.
Yeah, I know all of them, you know, everybody's under him.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and Ms. Garner, she's on the same level as Ms. Cotton?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. She hires and, and supervises our nurses, although our nurses also answer to at building level principal. It just gets so complicated, I, I don't know if I could draw it.
Well, you know, it's the same, it's, you know, it's, of course, uh, director of elementary, you know, is Ms. Sizmore, well, she's not, you know, she goes to the principal, so all the rest, it's the same thing, you know, with Garner.
I guess, in, in layman's terms, I guess, Ms. Hargrove is out in the civilian world, let's say the civilian world.
You should Jesse, we're a military, no, I'm just kidding. It's all right.
You got, you got, you've got lead men, you've got a lead man for stuff like that-
Right.
-and you're not paying them for a supervisor.
Right.
They go to that lead man, but they're not getting a supervisor paid.
Right.
So, that's, you know, that's the, the, the question I think a lot of people's going to have whenever they see this. If they, if a lot of people did get to see this, they would ask that same question.
Oh, it's going online, they'll get to see it.
Oh, I know, yeah, it's got to be approved by us, but, you know, I guess that's the question that, that I have is, you know, there's a su- if you, if you're on a construction site or any other place, you have a lead man or whatever, and then they go to that person for a lead man, but they still don't get a supervisor. It goes back to what I've said several times, we got supervisors supervising supervisors and getting supervisor paid.
Well-
And that's substantial, if you, if, you know, we don't tell a lot of people what-
I mean, Ms. Ms. Sizmore supervises coaches and pre-K, she does, I mean, elementary curriculum, she writes a pre-K grant. Um, I mean, we can go down through on the middle school, Dr. Blessing, all things ESL, he's our test, testing coordinator, uh, our middle school coach, anything to do, and there's a ton of others. I can list all those things under there, but I'm not so sure, it'll be so gaudy, it'd be difficult to read. But, I mean, that's why the job descriptions, I mean, all these people that are on this list supervise others, except that are listed at the top. If their name's on there, they are a supervisor, and they supervise others in other areas. If there is a Title I issue, I bet they're going to find Ms. Cole, the, uh, Director of Federal Programming and Secondary Education, that's one of her titles on top of that. I mean, they, they wear multiple hats and they do supervise others, like our principals. Ms. Cole has a part in supervising them on certain things. It, sometimes it's just shared.
And I think technically, the board does not have to approve the, uh, org chart, because our org chart is the top two tiers, and so-
If you go to policy number five point one zero one, is the policy number on that, it does have to be approved by us.
Okay.
Five, five point one zero one.
And I stand corrected.
I guess, I guess my concern is, and I have not talked to Ms. Cotton or Dr. Cornelius, he can tell you that, I've not talked to either one of them, but when I saw this, if I were in their position, I would felt like I'd been demoted. And that, that might, y'all may not even feel that way at all, but that's, that's, if I had been up here and thought that I couldn't go directly to you, I felt like I was demoted. And that's just my thinking, and, and I may be entirely wrong about it, but, and, and you can be assured, neither one of them have said one thing to me, so I don't want you to think that there's people up here that, yeah, yeah, and they're not. So, that's just my opinion.
Well, in my mind, um, in my mind, our organizational chart is way more complicated than what's on this piece of paper. And I would have a hard time, and I will take any suggestion, if you show me how, what the expectation of that is, I'll be more than glad to look at it.
I know that, I mean, I, I understand that.
Yes, ma'am, but all these are our supervisors. Um, our, our HR's not a supervisor, but yet she's floating above the supervisors. Well, the only reason that's happened, because we ran out of space, if, you know, um, you see Ms. Melissa on there to, to the left of me, I mean, yeah.
What was that policy number?
Five point one zero one.
Okay, I was in the whole wrong section, five point-
Five point one zero one.
Okay.
So, I can read you that, it's called line and staff relations. It says, "The director of school shall establish lines of authority which shall be approved by the board as, and shown on the system organizational chart." So, that's the first couple of lines, so it-
You gonna finish reading it, there's a whole lot more.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, I'm letting you, you said you wanted to read it.
All personnel are expected to keep the person to whom they are immediately responsible informed of their activities and shall refer matters requiring administrative action to the administrator to whom they were responsible. The administrator shall refer such matters to the next higher administrative authority when necessary. All personnel shall have the right to appeal any decision made by this administrative officer through grievance procedures established through the board policy. Lines of authority do not restrict the cooperative, sensible work, sensible working together of all mint staff members at all levels. The established lines of authority represent direction of authority and responsibility and have a use for a two-way flow of ideas to improve the program and operation of this school system. Is that good? I mean, that's all I can-
That's all of it.
I, I, I just, I may, I may ask, I need y'all's help. I need y'all to show me what the expectation is, because in my mind, to me, this is very functional. We meet, uh, weekly and discuss the things that are going on within our department. Uh, the folks that are not part of that meeting is our supervisor of transportation, and the reason he's not on it is they're getting buses back in the shop. But everybody else is, is part of that meeting outside of the, well, one of the secretaries is, outside of the receptionist, and HR, everybody is part of that leadership meeting. Everybody gets a turn at the table. The only other block that's not on there are our principals and our CTE director, and we have principal meetings to address things with them. And those supervisors, those other supervisors, all have a presentation in that principals' meeting.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This may be simplistic, but does it work?
In my mind, that makes pretty good sense.
Okay, so this is how you operate all the time, and it works?
For us, I think so.
I back to the old, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know?
But this is a change, this wasn't.
We never had one of these in five years.
Right, but what they did-
We ain't changing nothing, we're just trying to get something in place.
What they did was put down what's been in place and just put it on-
Okay, Dr. Tegus, did you answer to, uh, Mr. Sh- not, Mr. Shores in the past? Okay, that's a change. Did Ms. Cotton answer to you, Mr. Shores?
When, when either one of them, when any of these supervisors had any kind of problems and they couldn't get to, uh, the director of schools, yes, they came to me, even Mr. Is, correct?
But you didn't feel like you had to go through him to get approval? Okay, that-
But ultimately, if he had any problems, if you had problems, you couldn't get to Mr. Hargrove, you knew you could come to me, correct?
I would, I would if I could get to him.
Yes. So, ul- ultimately, every one of these, yes.
It's a change, so, I mean, I, I mean, it's a change, so we mostly-
I just tell you, the way we've always, and, and, and I do, I, I will say, they used to say, Coffey County Board of Education, the director of schools, then there was a line directly underneath it that had the deputy director, and everybody that was basically through the director was also through the, the deputy director, because they were the next one in, in line, uh, to handle whatever situation came up, which goes back to-
Okay, then you need to be over all these others too then?
Well, I am.
Oh, you're overall instructor?
Well, I'm not over them, but he put a, uh, go ahead, Mr. Hargrove, you're-
Perforated line there on the left, and really, the perforated line on the right, but it's solid, because I am the, whatever color that is, on the right side, I supervise those as well. Um, but I will say this, in the mornings, before our meeting, Mr. Shores meets with our maintenance director every morning.
Oh, that's always been the, you know, what I perceive as you being over transportation and maintenance. I mean, that's, that's been my thinking, and I remember, you, you even Jenkins, years ago, the tenant supervisor, he reported directly to the director, I've never known it any other way, even under Mr., even under, uh, Dr. McCall.
And I'm, I'm going to ask a question, just for curiosity, when, when you were up here-
A- and we had an organizational chart, and the line came out diagonal from the director of school, and the deputy director was over-
Okay, just got a quick question, whenever you were up here and Mr. Cummins wasn't, wasn't here, did they, did you go to Mr. Powell, Dr. Powell?
I don't-
Or did you go to nobody?
It doesn't matter who I went to.
I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to start you, I'm asking.
Yeah, I know it, but, uh, uh, Dr. Powell was the deputy director, but I never perceived him to be, uh, an intermediary between me and the director. I'll put it that way. And I don't think Mr. Jenkins or, or Ms., uh, did, did Sharon, Ms. Spears go through you?
I wasn't here when Ms. Spears-
Sharon Spears, you weren't here with Sharon?
I was at the feast coffee.
Okay. I don't-
But ul- ultimately, Mr. Westmoreland-
You weren't here when Sharon Spears was there?
Not up here, no.
No, I can't remember Dr. McCall.
Okay.
Dr. Cornelius, Ms. Cole, Dr. Blessing, Ms. Sizmore, um, I haven't dealt a lot with maintenance, um, uh, Tanya, I, I mean, all of these directors I've worked with in some capacity as their supervisor, on a daily basis.
Well, I, I know you do, and I know that I, I give you praise for-
Yes, ma'am.
-for pulling all these people together and working with them, because that hasn't been done, I don't think, as much in the past, which is wonderful. But I just, I'm just trying to be an advocate for people that won't say, that maybe, maybe I'm just getting on a soapbox for no reason, but I just feel like that if I'd been in that position and I looked at the organizational chart, I would think I'm not on the same level as the rest of these people, because I've got to go through someone else. I got an answer to them. But I don't know, maybe, how do y'all, y'all see it that way or not? Maybe it's just me.
I'll, I'll work on another one, and we can talk about it at our December meeting.
No, I'm just one person, I mean-
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I guess my question is, I, I'm thinking, you know, from the corporate world, which is not, you really can't compare, but maybe a little, um, a- and that's more of, and I don't think y'all do that here, but like, who, whoever approves your time card, your time-
Right.
-is your direct supervisor.
Right.
And then it goes up from there, and so, you know, Mr. Shores, you're, you're the deputy director, but you're also a direct supervisor for maintenance and transportation, right? So, is that two roles? I guess, I don't know, or one, one audi- I don't know.
If, if, if those supervisors need guidance on anything, I bet Mr. Morris is going to call Mr. Shores first, over a bus issue.
That would be, yeah.
And, and like I said before, if Mr. Shores isn't there, I've taken those transportation calls.
Yeah, and so, everybody else at the director level falls under you, right?
They all fall under me-
Yeah.
-but just as far as dividing up some of the workload, he's probably going to deal with maintenance before I am. He's probably going to deal with transportation before I am.
Okay.
He's going to deal with, uh, Ms. Tanya in the area of safety and things like that before I am. I'll still have a hand in on things. We, we talk daily, two or three times a day about things. And conversely, if there's an issue at a school, I'm probably going to hear about it, but if I'm not here, the call's going to get directed to him.
Yeah.
And-
But that is just by default, I think, that if you're not in the office-
I got you.
-it's deferred to him by default. Um, but like, say, for instance, if one of the, say, Mr. Cornelius, for example, not picking on you, but just somebody at that level maybe had an issue that they wanted to discuss, what, no, whatever it may be, they go to you or Mr. Shores?
He, he could go to, he's, he's coming to me.
Okay, so that would, in my mind-
Depends on which way it's coming from, you know what I'm saying? If it's going down or coming up, and I hope that makes a little sense.
Yeah, when I think organizational chart-
Right.
-I'm thinking, who, I, I need to see who I'm going to. Who is my next person up? And who is their next person up? So, I guess that would be, that's how, you know?
Right.
But I don't know if that's-
But the chart shows the next person up is, is-
Yeah.
So-
So, I guess that might be maybe where the confusion is, I don't know.
Sure, well, if, please, email me your suggestions, and I will get those implemented, and we'll try again in December.
And I have not had enough time to look at this, analyze this, I'm just trying to make sense of maybe what she might be thinking. As an employee, who's never been at the top-
Right.
Never will be.
Right.
You know, us at the bottom are saying, who's my direct, when I've got an issue, when I've got a, if it's an HR issue, or I've got a question, or I need to have a approved time off, I just need to know who I'll go to. Who, who do I report to? Report to is what we call it.
And that, that was my, my, uh, thinking, is that if I hadn't reported, and it's not against you, Mr. Shores, but if I had not been reporting to you before, and all of a sudden, it got changed that I've got to go through you before I can go to the director, I would feel like, I'd, I'd feel different from these other people over here that go directly to you.
Okay, I, I will, I will say, Dr. Cornelius normally would go to the director of schools first.
But then that needs to be changed.
Okay, so, yes, that could be moved over, if you need to move it over. Ultimately, everybody here on this chart, except for, I mean, Coffey County Board does not, but if Mr. Hargrove's not here, then I step into that position-
Right, and that's what the deputy director draws.
And if it's, if he's not here, Dr. Cornelius would come to me, uh, Mr. Westmoreland would come to me. Right now, they would go to, to Mr. Hargrove.
But not according to the chart, they would.
I, 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 I get, and that's why the, it's hard, you can't, the, you don't, we don't have enough, big enough piece of paper.
You just need to put one line-
Yes, ma'am, our HR, we deal with HR weekly, both of us, but he deals with HR more than I do. On hiring issues, uh, retirement, whatnot, we sit down together as a team. I don't have a line directly from me to HR, but I promise you this, Ms. Langham speaks a whole lot more with Kelvin than she does me. Does that make sense? But we meet weekly. Does that make sense?
I think, I think perception is, is everything.
But you, y'all, uh, please, I, I'm more than glad to change this. Please send your suggestions, and I'll make it happen, and we'll look at it again at December's meeting. I'll be more than glad.
Let, let me say this, thank you very much. I know this is a, 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 this is the reason why, when I came on here as a board member, I asked Mr. Shores about our organizational chart, and that's the reason I brought that up, you know, at, at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, because we, and his reply was, we haven't had one in five years. And that's not the way it's supposed to be, and this is why we're in the position that we're in, and we're, we appreciate you for trying to fix this.
Please don't take this as-
Please don't.
No, it, it's-
I just, I'm trying to be an advocate for some of these positions, because I just feel like, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
Behind the doors, I think all of us up here, we've heard that the little sprinklings of, of this, why there's, you know, and God bless you. Thank you. And I, I'm saying this in public, in front of God and everybody, thank you very much for taking, you know, we understand this is a chore, but, uh, we're just, this is something that we're all trying to get straightened out, and, uh, but God bless you, we love you, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, and it, it might be just simple enough to go to Turner, Garnett, or Cotton, Cornelius, and Morris and say, who are you going to come to first?
Right, that's on science.
Whoever they answer, you say, you're coming to them first.
Yeah, who do I answer to?
The remainder, whoever.
Right.
Otherwise, I mean, I mean, we know that Mr. Shores will automatically be second if you're not there. But, yeah, I, I think this is a ton of work.
All right, so we'll go.
It's a big help. About the time you gave it to us, I had a question. And, of course, it wasn't, it didn't have the answer to my question on here, but I did figure it out.
Okay, next up is bus policy, six point three oh eight, and we've got a couple, that should be in your folder. And recommended revisions, so I'll turn this back over to you, too.
Uh, this wasn't my request on this one.
Oh.
That request-
The best policy is Robert's.
Oh, okay.
But we were on a roll there.
We were on a roll. Um, so this is going to come up at the- So this is going to come up at the policy meeting? Is that? Cause we got, uh, we got bus conduct, and then we have six point three oh eight, six point three oh eight, six point three oh eight, and six point three oh eight with a red line.
So he sent a text, and he said to share this with everybody, this is his call on the end. He said, on the bus conduct, um, we will try to insert the opportunity for the bus director, or whatever he called, the ability to have a final say of who can ride the bus or not. It's severe enough discipline issues. And kids are on the bus, that's totally different distraction driver to deal with that directly impacts the safety of other students on the bus. Currently, current policy states that principal only makes those decisions, and that some aspect has and is being abused by some. Bus conduct is out of control. He said, I would just like some feedback so that we can bring it back to the policy committee, and hopefully design something that the full board can get behind.
So what is?
That's, that's from Mr. Bailey.
So the red line here is TSBA recommended changes to the policy.
So the red, yes, it's merging the Coffee County policies with the TSBA policies.
Okay.
And that's the difference on that.
Okay. So Robert wanted us to look this over, and before it goes to the policy committee?
Uh, yeah, well, it was at the policy committee, and he pulled it out and had it come to the work session.
Okay.
So, uh.
And then he didn't show up. Yeah. I, I understand, I understand.
But that's what he was wanting everybody to look at.
Okay. So, to see if this is acceptable to us, and if we needed to make any additional changes?
I think that he, let me read it again, I think that he's wanting the directors of, or the supervisor of transportation. He's wanting him to have the ability to have the final say of who can ride the bus or not with severe enough discipline issues. He feels that some of the stuff that when they're on there, the bus is out of control, and it is not, um, it's a safety issue.
Okay. I'm not seeing, it says, the director's school shall develop procedures governing use cameras. But I'm not seeing in here where it says the.
I think what he's talking about would be on our current policy, lines fourteen and fifteen, where it says, well, starting with thirteen, the principal of the student transported shall be informed by the bus driver of any serious discipline problem, and may be called upon to assist if necessary. A student may be denied the privilege of riding the bus if the principal determines that his or her behavior
Okay.
is such as caused disruption on the bus. Uh, I think he's wanting, from my understanding, he's wanting that changed to the supervisor of transportation's.
So that, so there's no red line on that?
Well, no, I mean, this was on our, I guess this is our current one.
Yeah.
Ms. Melissa, can you make copies of this, if you don't mind? I, I want to share this, uh, these are our discipline procedures for our, thank you, Mr. Charlie. All right, so what happens now, Chris Coon is a fourth grade student from?
Hickerson, yes sir.
Yes sir.
Real member, ain't you?
Yeah.
He rides.
I'm a hawk.
You know, he's a hawk for life. He bu, he rides bus one, two, three, four. And he does something on the bus, first offense, and, and the sheet, we follow a procedure. That bus, uh, bus driver is going to fill out a, uh, behavior report, it might not be named that, but there's a procedure, right, and that goes to the principal, goes to the garage, transportation gets one, and the parents get one. And then there are, is a progressive uh, discipline plan in place, if it happens again, they get this, if they happen again, they, they get this. We are in the process of trying to, um, plug the behaviors or the dam, so to speak. Because we do understand that there are, uh, we've brought up having volunteers ride on some of our buses. But the bottom line is this, it's no different than our classroom. You may get, Ms. Holly may have a much stricter classroom than Ms. Beth. Your tolerance level may be more, and, and you get into that, we want our buses to be, first of all, safe. And I'll tell you something that our bus supervisor does, and I applaud the dickens out of this. If there's a re, uh, referral filled out, guess what they do? What'd you do on Sunday afternoons during football season, Mr. Coon? You go watch what?
Film.
You watch film. Our, our supervisor watches film with those bus drivers, and we talk about things, we talk about different options, we talk about, Tim really does a good job of trying to coach our bus drivers through that and improve. The bottom line, it's going to go way back to what Ms. Beth said early, it's about relationships. And those relationships are principal to bus driver, those relationships are principal to children, those relationships are bus drivers and principal, bus driver and children, bus driver and parents. It's building that good relationship with those children, and we talked about this a while ago, and buses aren't going to be any different. We talked about behaviors escalation that we have in our buildings with behaviors, and we're not, we're not the only ones that are getting that, that's, that's happened in public schools across the US. Um, I think we have a plan or two in place to try to correct this. We're going to be working with principals. I support Mr. Morris a hundred and ten percent on working with our bus drivers. We're going to continue our bus driver training that Ms. Tanya did, the last time we did it was two years ago. We're going to do it, do it again after Christmas break here.
What if the bus driver doesn't fill out the report?
Probably nothing.
Yep.
Well, I know, you know, the, uh, bus conduct report is shared with us
Yes sir.
every month, and it's quite an opening when you, excuse me, go through and start looking at it. Um, you know, I'm sitting here looking at the discipline procedure for bus riders, you know, and there's several instances on that report. You know, there's kids with third, fourth, fifth, sixth, even seventh offenses. And I have yet to see one, the fifth offense is automatic six weeks. I have yet to say that on, on any of them. You know, and.
Right.
And I mean.
How many students have we had that have committed that one?
Let's see here, here you go, something I I had put together over the.
Just happened to have.
No, hey, I'd love to see it. That's right in Mr. Coon's wheelhouse.
That's right.
Just, that's all we happened to have.
Keep from spending, you know, going and eating at them high dollar restaurants.
You guys coordinated this, right?
Yeah. He, he was very on time for that.
Can I interject a little bit right here?
Yes sir.
And I didn't, I don't, I didn't see your report sheet, but the question was brought up, how many, what if a bus report, what if a bus report is not turned in, and I provide him a monthly, I provide him a monthly report through the system, the student information system, and I just, I was a little bit late, my couple days, I got it to you this afternoon before the meeting. And from October thirteenth, because that was the beginning of the next day, till November the fourteenth, Fri- Friday. So that period, that month, there were sixty-nine incidences throughout the county, throughout every school. Sixty-nine entries of bus conduct, okay, so, um, that the buildings, the buildings handled and entered into synergy for, for, you know, for a conduct report. But I don't know how many, I don't, if you have more than sixty-nine, then that would answer the question then, that not every report that a bus driver fills up, because now it's assistant principal, that's what we did, we had those that came in, and we handled them, we went through this process, and did exactly, you know, what was on, what was on here, and this is a severe enough penalty. But that would bring up your point, if they're not, I mean, if it's, if it's more, if your number is more, like from October thirteenth to November the fourteenth, and I don't know what date you're using, but that gives you a little bit of a reference there, because there were exactly sixty-nine incidences that I saw today.
I believe there was more than that, but I didn't break it down per month, but, but all total, uh, and I did not include one that was uh, a, uh, that took place on a sped bus, because that's totally diff, handled totally different anyway. These are, these are gen ed buses. Um, through the, the date that Ms. Westmoreland sent out to us, I think that was first part of last week.
Uh, the tenth.
The tenth, yeah. It, you know, we had four hundred and nineteen reports filed from the first day of school. Uh, I mean, that's how many, that's how many write-ups have been turned, turned in. You know, and I went on here and I broke it down, you know, with, with three or more conduct reports. And, and these were, you know, these were students because on that report, it lists if it's their first offense, second offense, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh, so I mean, I just kind of went down through here and broke it out by, by school. Of course, you know, you look at the middle school, and that's where you're going to have the biggest, um, you know, the most write-up, or the most conduct reports turned in, you know, that age group, because they're, they're learning to fill their own, you know.
We talked about it earlier, they're building those.
Those networks.
Yes.
You know, they're, they're very, but, um, you know, I, I know on here, we got, let's see, what was it, the fifth offense? You know, um, there would be four, four that, um, that's had five, there's one that's had six, and there's two that's had seven plus conduct reports turned in on them, so, um, you know, I mean, that's just, that's just something to, to, to look at. And then I also broke it out where the buses with ten plus conduct reports, I listed them, and the, you know, with the number of reports, their, their home school, or, or home route, should say. And then it's listed, you know, what the, the schools that the reports went to. Of course, on just about every one of them, you can say that there's the middle school listed. Because once again, that's, uh, out of the four hundred and nineteen, they had a hundred and ninety-four instances of, of misconduct.
So half of them come from there.
Basically. Basically.
On this, on this percent unreturned, what does that mean, what does that mean?
Okay, on the unreturned, if you look at that list, it, it lists the consequences that was given for that, um, bus conduct report. Or that was returned back to the uh, transportation department, well, the unreturned is the number of instances that they did not get anything back from the schools on that, that write-up, or that bus.
So there was forty-eight Hillsborough that wouldn't, that wasn't rep, responded to?
Yes ma'am.
So you're saying the report is written up by the bus driver, and it goes to the school? And the school has to follow back up?
Parents going to get a copy, transportation, the bus driver's going to take that copy with them to transportation headquarters, and the parent.
But this, it goes to the admin, the admin's supposed to take care of the bus report. Then there's three, there's, I don't know if they have changed it on the, the sheet, but there was three copies, carbon copies. One goes to the bus driver that goes also back to, uh, bus garage.
Transportation.
One stays with the principal or the admin, then one goes home with the student to the parent to be signed, so they know what the punishment, what's going on is. That, that's the way it's supposed to be happening.
Okay.
When you say unreturned, that's like no response?
Yeah, no response back from the school.
From the school.
Yeah, back to the transportation department stating that this is what was,
So we don't.
what was done.
We don't know how those were handled, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Does the bus driver know how it was handled? If it's not returned?
Nobody does.
I guess the only way they'd know what's handled is if the kid gets back on the bus or not.
The report should be returned. If it's not, it should be returned.
Yeah.
So that everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah.
Two schools on there that had quite a few that weren't returned.
So basically, in Hillsborough, eighty percent of what's going on don't even get back to the bus driver.
Mm-hmm. Or get back to the
Sure.
transportation department.
And you, you note a potential area that, that we've talked about working on. But I also want to remind you this, Ms. Holly is very strict. She's going to write you up for about near nothing. Ms. Beth has a little more tolerance.
I'm bad.
You get what I'm saying, so the number of write-ups, I mean, I,
Yeah.
I'm not in accounting, we want our buses safe first. And what level of behavior or what constitutes, you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely.
Between bus drivers is going to be no different than it is in our classrooms.
Well, you may have, like you said, you may have one bus driver that's super strict on everything, and you're going to have a bus driver that's, you know, oh honey, just sit back down, you're fine, you know, I mean, you're going to have a lot of coddling going on, uh, with some of your bus drivers, and, you know. But the, I guess the main thing is, and if you sit down and really look at that, that chart and, and study it, you start seeing the, you know, the biggest thing it gets back to is it doesn't follow the discipline procedure. Because I mean, you'll have kids with, you know, three or four offenses, and, you know, those wrote down, they got a warning.
Right.
Well, I mean, that, you know, that's where that's got to stop.
Right.
You know, I mean, we got the procedure for a reason. I mean, you know, that's what, you know, that's kind of stuff's got to, you know, where we need to.
Without a doubt, and, but I want to make sure we are consistently implying, because we're going to kick her off a bus. Remember, you get into classrooms, and that sixth referral, we told that line, is a sixth referral. Whereas Ms. Holly, we kick people, she doesn't have half her busload left, because she's kicked them all off, or whiskered, and you get what I'm saying? That plays out too. I just, I guess my point of saying that, Mr. Coon, is I, I read you loud and clear, but on, there's another side to it as well.
Right.
Are you saying?
I just want to make sure we're all aware of the entirety.
And, and let me, let me, you know, because I've, I've, I've used a lot, I've dealt with a lot of bus notes over my years as a principal. You can get, and, and I think what Mr. Hargrove is trying to say, I don't want to put the words in, you can have a bus driver, and I'm not saying it's okay to do this, so the student is in their own, but they're not supposed to turn behind them and talk to somebody on the seat behind them. The, the bus driver could turn that in. And, and, well, they do it again, and they do it again, and, and, but it's turning behind them, and some of our kids won't come to school if they don't have a way to school. So that's one of the things that's looked at, but then on the other hand, you have a kid pick up a pencil and throw it, which I've always thought was the, one of the most dangerous things, because it could hit the bus driver and cause a wreck, it could poke out another kid's eye, there's so many things it could do. That could jump into an automatic, you're, you're off the bus. So, there's, there's different levels, and, and if our principals are not, they need to be looking at those different levels as well. And yes, that, that form states, it doesn't make any difference what it is, if they do it six times, they're off the bus for the rest of the, or six weeks, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
And, and we gotta remember with Mr. Can- Dr. Canis, we, we do have attendance things. If the kids are not in school, they're, they're not gonna learn. And so, there's different weights to different parts of it, and it does become hard to, to kick a kid off the bus for their, their feet being in the aisle of the, the bus. Am I saying it's okay to put your feet in the aisle of the bus? No, that's dangerous, it could trip somebody. But, but they're, they put their foot into the aisle and they get written up. And that goes back to what Mr. Hargrove is saying, you do have some bus drivers that will, now, little Johnny, I need you to move your feet back in, again, and again, and again. And then sometimes it's ten times, and then they finally write them up. We, we, we understand that, and it's not allowed, but it, it's one of those things that it's not just a cut and dry easy, because there are different situations and different levels, and, and you, you don't wanna take a kid off if they're just talking to their friend behind them. 'Cause I've done that, whenever I'm on the bus with y'all at a, going to, you know, a school or something for a fall tree, I turn around and talk to y'all.
Well, what, what is wrong with that?
You're not allowed to do that.
Why would you be able to do that on a bus?
I always did.
Because it's, it's dangerous, you're supposed to be looking forward.
Straight ahead.
It's, it's the rules, you're supposed to, you're supposed to be looking forward, if ever, there's ever an accident, then you're gonna hit that seat in front, and it can actually create a, a neck injury, so you're not supposed to be doing that. Uh, so, there's, there's different things with it, and, and we need to remember those different things. I agree, there's something needs to be done, we need to look at it, but we can't just automatically just say, six times and then boom, you're, you're off. 'Cause those kids might not ever come to school that whole time, and, and they go to judge, and the judge says, what, I couldn't get my kids to school, I had to go to work.
But I think consistency.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't, I'm just, I wanna give y'all that.
We, we, I, I, thank you, go ahead, Mr. Hanscher.
I, I think consistency is a thing that we're, we're liking too. We just talked about this in our legislature thing, and Mr. Ballard was there, Mr. Coon. Uh, we also had a, a, a knife issue come up, and they didn't get but five days. You know, and, and we just talked about this at our legislature thing.
And, and.
The zero tolerance thing is not zero tolerance, and, and we, we just, again, we just talked about that this, this past weekend.
Sure, and on the other end, it states in policy, they have to report by the end of the route. That was not reported to us by the end of the route. Our principals can't act on it if they didn't know about it, but it clearly states that. But to, to address the, I hear you loud and clear, we're on the very same page, we want our buses to be safe, we want discipline, we want consistent discipline, we're training our bus drivers, our transportation supervisors all over it. We're attacking in different areas, uh, we hear you loud and clear, Mr. Coon, it's, and, and it does, it needs to get better.
Well, I think the, the biggest thing, you know, after look, you know, looking through the reports.
Right.
You go through there and, and look at what the, the misconduct was, and, you know, some of them's pretty, pretty bad, and then you look at the discipline that was given, and it's like, you know, now you look at some of them, and like Mr. Shores said, you know, little Johnny was turned around in his seat, you know, I get that, that, that's, but when you look at them, you know, a kid is choking another kid. A kid is, is, um, you know, throwing objects across the bus, which, you know, all of that is very dangerous.
It is.
'Cause we got, we got one person on that bus, you know, and, and that's a rolling campus.
Yep.
You know, and, and the thing is, is, you know, it's very dangerous, and that's where after grave, Mr. Gillie is, you know, it's detrimental that, that, you know, you know, that the discipline needs to be consistent across the board, because all those buses are.
On the bus, it needs to be consistent on the bus with our drivers.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Mr. Morris is trying to attack that and on the punishment end. Uh, you brought up something a while ago about our, our maintenance, our, our, uh, bus supervisor applying the, the punishment. That might be something worth looking into.
And, and why couldn't you decipher between a minor offense and a major? Like, if you've got seven minor offenses, you, that's, if all the child's doing, like you said, maybe one bus driver is more tolerant than others.
Yes, ma'am.
Not sitting up straight or whatever.
It is, it's just not cut and dry. But I, I, I hear you loud and clear, that might be something we might, may wanna do. Um, let our, our transportation supervisor deal with all the.
Our admin, that deal with this, they need to be talking to the bus driver, they need to be out there when they get a report, whatever they decide to go with it. They, they don't need just hand a report to them either, they need to discuss that with, with the driver. There needs to be a communication of what's going on, and I think it will take care of a lot of the, the things that's going on. But, but they're gonna have, we're gonna have to move that direction, and like Mr. Hargrove, we're hearing you, we, we are hearing you. And, and we need to make sure that those things are taking place, and if they're not, they start getting done. So, uh, but, but it does, it creates a communication piece that the driver is the one that's having to deal with it. The, the principal may know things about that kid and some other things that's going on, they need to have those discussions. If you, if you never talk together, it, it never, you never find out, so, I, I think that's a good.
And that, speaking to that, the relationship piece is what he's talking to. Our bus drivers hear things that our teachers and bu- and principals don't hear. I mean, they're part of that child's, an important part of that child, 'cause they hear things that sometimes a ti- a classroom teacher or an administrator's not gonna hear.
Well, they're the first ones to pick them up.
First face they see, last face they see.
Yeah, and the, the bus drivers and some of the bus drivers that I've talked to feels like that they're just, they're wasting their time. And we've gotta get away from that too, I mean, we, we've gotta make them feel like that they're not wasting their time. Because they're, obviously, they're not communicating with them, and they're, they're not turning the stuff in. And some of the times, if we're not turning it in, what does that tell you? Well, it's not gonna do no good, so they're not gonna need me wasting my time in turning it in.
Yeah, and, and, yes, we agree wholeheartedly with that.
We've gotta fix that, you know, I, I think that's what all of us.
And I, I'll even go further enough to say, if, if the bus driver doesn't feel like they're getting that, they need to go and talk to Mr. Morris. Then Mr. Morris can, needs to come and talk to me, and we need to, we need to get that figured out, so that we aren't getting, taken care of. But if it doesn't, if we just build up and, and let it just get faster and get madder and madder, and nothing's getting done, nothing's, nothing's gonna get done. We, we've got to, we've gotta have that communication, and the driver needs to, if they're not feeling like they're getting the sport, they need to go to Mr. Morris. And Mr. Morris needs to bring it to me, and we need to start looking at what we need to do to take care of it. But serious offenses, and if a report gets turned in, that bus driver did it for a reason, there's something needs to be checked out. It may not be anything massively bad, but it needs to be checked out, and we need to figure out what's going on. And I'm not gonna say we can fix it, but we need to start looking to see what, what needs to be done to take care of it.
Now, in student discipline, from July twenty-ninth to November fourteenth, there's three hundred and eighty-nine district-wide documented bus conducts, bus discipline.
Three eighty-nine.
There's four, four nineteen through November tenth.
And, and very easily what could happen, and I, I, a principal gets busy, they, they take care of the bus note, they set it aside, they're dealing with something else. Two weeks later, it's not been entered into synergy yet, and I'm not saying that's right, I'm just saying, it's one of those things that happens. So, it's not in his report, but you have it.
Well, I mean, we all got it, 'cause it was in.
You think you know what I'm saying, though? And, and what's happened is the principal just hasn't had the chance to enter it into the, the database, and it happens.
I guess my biggest thing is, you know, that, that I'm pushing far as just, we need consistency from top to bottom.
Yes, sir.
On, concur, on it. I, I mean, that's, um, I think everybody needs to get together and, you know, talk about it, but, you know, biggest thing is, we just need consistency from top to bottom with, you know, make sure that everybody, everybody's on the same page.
And we gotta attack that from, and we pass this out, that's gonna get attacked from several different angles.
Right.
In January or beginning of the first, uh, second semester, we have some training for our bus drivers as well. And we wanna support our bus drivers, they're important. I mean, like you said, the first face, the last face, but, uh.
Would it improve consistency if we took Mr. Gillie's suggestion here and, and deleted the principal and put Mr. Morris or?
That might be something you wanna, I mean, that's.
Is there any?
That's an option, that's what I brought up a while ago, that's.
I, I, I'm gonna be honest, I think I would be very leery of doing that. Uh, I mean, that's the choice of the board. I, I would be leery of doing that, because right now you have somebody that's in the school, that knows the child, knows the family, and we, we're looking at ten different places, and if you do that, you're, you're knocking it down to one person. And, and I, even our principals are struggling to get all these in and taken care of, and now you have one person that doesn't know all of the families and all the situations that's out there. But if that's the direction you wanna go, we, we will take it and definitely go with it. But we're, we're talking about one person basically taking and doing all the discipline throughout the entire district on buses, but maybe that's what you want.
I, I'm just looking for pros and cons, 'cause that's what.
I'll be leery of doing it, that's my, my own opinion.
We could try it for a, for a period of time and see if it worked. I mean, we don't, this is not, this is not etched in stone, I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Gillie as well, I mean, we've gotta do, this is not working. Well, what we're doing now is not working.
Would this be something that, I'm just thinking outside the box a little bit here, that, would there be enough work involved here that it would be advantageous to create some sort of position for this, or no?
Enter, the last thing on the agenda was the bus volunteers.
Okay.
Second to last.
Well, second to last, I forgot, we shifted to.
If it's a matter of like, I mean, I understand the principals are.
I've talked with the transportation supervisor on this issue, he feels like we have about five buses that are targeted. And, uh, that would really help, we would, um, uh, Ms. Melissa's actually got application together, but, and we feel like it is acceptable with our insurance, it would be covered, but we need to sit down at some point and go through the vetting process of the people.
Actually, in your packet.
There you go, the, the form is, and go through the vetting process and talk about how we'll hash that out, you know, 'cause there'll be, it's a little, an investment. And I don't, you know, you have folks volunteering their time and efforts to, to sit on our buses, and you're talking about having those people trained as well.
Yeah, it's more than just driving the bus and dropping, there's an administrative side of it.
Sure.
Entering in all the.
Yes.
All the bad behavior, the job in itself, you know, sad, but.
Well, I think once a child gets to that second offense, which is, could include up to three-day suspension, they need to know that they'll be going to the school counselor, 'cause we just gotta keep the school, I'm like, Mr. Shores, you gotta, they gotta coordinate this. This can't just be that they're on that bus, they're not, no longer my responsibility. If a child's acting up that much, the counselor needs to find out what's going on, if possible, what's going on with that child, and talk to the parent and say, look, you know, this, you, they're gonna, this is what's gonna happen, even though they've already signed this, the counselor, that school, I mean, and that's what they're for.
Ms. Frida, that, I'm not discounting what you said, but that's already taken place on two or three issues, and I spoke to this a while ago, where the bus driver heard things from the child, and the school counselor, our schools got involved into the situation.
And maybe if we had a, had a rule that, you know, by the third offense, they automatically, even if it's, they go to the school counselor, 'cause I'm sure, I'm sure not all four hundred and nineteen of these kids went to the counselor.
Well, that's one reason that we might wanna consider leaving it in the hands of the principals, because they're like, they're in the school with these counselors, and they'll see, if we set up a policy for it, they'll see that it's followed through and the kids get that. But we won't necessarily get that with our bus drivers, that we get followed through with our counselors.
That, that, that was my point, kinda need to work, I don't know, it's just, it's a hard situation. But I do understand why a bus driver would be upset if you turned in a report and never got anything back. You know, even if the principal thought it was a minor thing, they just need to tell that bus driver, look, I didn't, you know, we didn't do anything, we figure that's minor.
This situation's unique.
Check, it's, check mark, you, you responded.
Right.
I, I'd probably say, Ms. Frida, there's a little element of neglect, it may just be they haven't entered them all in synergy yet.
They got a lot going on, but yeah. Creating a new position. I might apply for it.
I got you.
Play the discipline Nazi?
Yes.
That would be high stress level.
I wouldn't sleep at night, just reading the conduct report keeps me up. I don't know.
Don't know if I'd wish that on anybody. All right, you wanna talk a little bit more? I mean, we, you kinda touched on the, the bus volunteers, how you can.
It actually came up during our innovative committee meeting, and, uh, uh, our board chairman proposed about having dads or people outside the school system in our school buildings. But we just started thinking about moms and dads or just caring adults in our community that would ride buses in the afternoon, 'cause the majority of these instances, you know, it's kinda funny about children. Uh, if you can get them in the building in a halfway decent place, they're gonna be okay until just about lunch. Majority of behaviors happen lunch in the P M. And, and the busing just is a part of that, um, but potentially having volunteers ride on buses. Uh, my thoughts are, we need at least ten, that way there's a little bit of a rotation, and you're not expecting the same person every day. Ten, fifteen would even better, so we could swap in, swap out, and, um, place those on those most needy buses, so to speak, um, and assist with that. But it would be purely volunteer, uh, think about paying them, uh, for their vetting, the vetting part, portion of it, background check, that type of stuff, and if someone rode X amount of trips, we produce that payment possibly back to them. That way, they're not out anything for volunteering, but we've got some work, you know, we've got some things accomplished on the pay-in. It's just, if we pay for Mr. Coon one time, pay for it, and he does it one time off, we've lost quite a bit of money, so, an investment. Uh, there would be a training required too, so.
So, so basically, you're take, you're talking about these would be, um, basically employees of the school system? If you're gonna pay them for their, for their trip?
They would be volunteers.
Okay, well, you know, I, I'm, I'm just looking at this from a liability issue, I think that's a huge liability issue. Don't matter what kinda training you give them, unless you give them a psyche valve, because, no offense, you're gonna get some people out here that the first time there's an incident, and they put their hands on a kid, and another parent sees it, 'cause the thing is, on a bus, it's videoed.
Right.
It's all on video. I just think you're opening yourself up for a, a huge liability issue in that regard. Whereas if it, if they were a official employee of the school, not saying that they're paid with benefits and whatnot, but if they're an official employee, you know, then it kinda covered a little, a little better than being a volunteer.
Uh, uh, I hear what you're saying, um, that goes through, uh, what we come up with is the vetting process. We vet our teachers in the same fashion that we would vet the volunteers, so, you know, we have a background check, uh, we'll be drug tested. There's some things that are legally held against them if they violate certain, certain things, but.
So, you're saying there's people out there that wanna ride around on the. So you're saying there's people out there that want to ride around on a school bus and handle discipline issues for free?
I don't know. I don't know, but.
The truth is, yes, because when my kids were riding the school buses when they were small, I called the school and begged them to let me ride that bus. We were having teenagers pulling their pants down, showing their butts to my second grader. And I, and that, their excuse, insurance. It's too much of a liability. Well, that, that kid showing his butt to my kid. Your life will get sued a lot quicker with that than a lot of things. So, yeah, there are parents out there who say, I will ride that bus.
I'm gonna do that.
Anybody that.
That's what I ended up doing.
The, the law wouldn't allow just anybody to ride the bus, period. There, there's even a sign that says. You, there's certain things you have to go through. So, there, there are, there are laws with that.
I called an insurance company and I talked to the main person. So, now, I don't know, if there's a law, then we need to check it out.
There, there's a law that if you're driving down the road, you can't let just anybody on that bus.
No, no, we're, we're not talking about.
I know. But, but what I'm saying is, there is a law that has just passed, that we had to, and put a sign on. You're not allowed to let anybody on that bus that is not supposed to be on that bus. And.
Can't just hitch a ride.
It's just a law. And I'm not saying, I just want you to be aware, there is a law.
Yeah, can't, they hitch a.
It could be the same as like, uh, a volunteer football coach, correct? So, I mean, they're the same.
Now, I wasn't talking about what Mr. Hargrove was talking about. I'm talking about the law that you're not allowed to let others on the bus.
Okay, so when I called the insurance company, I asked them if we could let volunteers ride the bus. That had background checks, that had, you know, they would go through the same procedure. And he said, yes, it would be covered under insurance. And I, and I asked him, I said, well, what, and I said, do we need to do anything else? He said, no. And I said, what about a waiver? And he said, well, that's always a good idea to, like, double cover yourself. So, that's where I did the waiver. But, I mean, it would be the same, you know, if you were talking about putting your hands on us, it'd be the same as a football coach. A volunteer football coach or something like that, catching a, you know, putting your hands on a football coach, is that?
Maybe, but I, I look at it that the, uh, you know, the volunteer assistant football coach is. You know, in essence, is employed by the school. They, they're getting a stipend from the school. They're getting paid to be there.
Some, most are.
Sometimes.
Most are.
Yeah, most.
Some are.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, the ones that aren't, then absolutely, they fall in the same, they fall into the same category. Um, you know, I, I just, I'm just thinking about it, you know, looking at it from a liability issue is, is, you know. You know, like I say, you got, you got, you know, Mr. Hargrove over here volunteering, riding the bus. And he puts his hand on little, little Timmy to break up a fight. You know, little Timmy and little Mark, he's breaking up the fight. And then little Timmy's mom gets wind of it and, you know. She goes, gets an attorney, and next thing you know, here we are.
Right, well, that, I mean, that could happen in the classroom.
Yeah.
Standing, that's not just.
Yeah, but I mean, it's one thing if it's a teacher that does it, or, or, you know.
Well, the volunteer could get hurt too, from what I've read in the, but, I mean, I'd be afraid to be on there myself.
But, uh, you know, I mean, I'm just looking at it from the liability standpoint of, you know, are you gonna open Pandora's box?
What about the safety issue though, Chris? Are our kids safer on that bus? Is that bus driver safer if we've got that extra pair of eyes?
Oh, our buses would be much, much better off with, than a bus attendant on them. But my whole thing is, is from the volunteer's standpoint and, and parents is. The liability side of it. I mean, to me, honestly, I, I'd love to see a bus attendant on every school bus. Because that would leave the driver to focus on, on driving and being safe, you know. Um, I mean, we have it on our sped buses, you know, we have a, a bus attendant on them. Just because of, you know, you just have to, you know, getting a, but, I mean, on our GNED buses. I'd love to see a bus attendant on every one of them from, I mean, it's being a much safer environment, you know.
Well, I get your point, I really do, on the liability, but honestly, I've seen more shut down in the school system. That could have real positive results by just that liability and the fear of liability. It's constantly shutting us down.
Yep, yeah, but unfortunately, we live in a day and time where everybody is so happy. You got, you got attorneys out here that's just dying to get a hold of something like this, because they're gonna make a bunch of money off of it. And I hate to say it, but they're the ones that push it. Um, you know, so it, it's kind of one of them things that, you know. We have to look at the, the climate that the world's in today and go by that and what's best for, you know, what's best for our system.
Well, what would be the difference in a, uh, would they be considered a volunteer? We paid them a small stipend? Say there were volunteers that would be willing to do it, but ten dollars a day, or, you know, something. If we're paying them, would they be considered an employee and covered?
According to what Mr. Coon, wait, I, I guess we'd be just like a volunteer football coach. That's not with getting a stipend, just not much of a stipend.
Still be a employee, and that would maybe cover the liability part. Because, uh, I mean, you know, if somebody's gonna volunteer, for, you know, and you're gonna pay them ten, they're, they're not doing it for the money anyway. I mean, some way or another, we could get around where they could be an employee, and then it'd still go through the vetting and everything, just like an employee.
But if they're volunteer, Melissa, the insurance still applies, right? Okay, so, so there's no difference between a employee versus a volunteer in this particular case, according to our insurance?
That's what he said.
The biggest difference would be perception. That's gonna be your biggest difference is perception, public perception. Like Mr. Hansford said earlier on, I think on the organizational chart, you know, it's all about perception. You know, how people on the outside see it. You know, and that, that's the biggest thing that, you know. You know, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying that I'm against it. I'm just, you know, looking at it from the whole liability issue. You know.
What if we put some of our, our staff on those, on those buses?
As far as in.
Doing the same thing.
We'll start paying overtime.
Overtime.
We can.
They'll probably leave. Being honest.
I mean, wouldn't that be the, wouldn't that get us out of all of that, Mr. Hargrove?
Uh, in, in a way, it can, creates another conundrum on the other end, and when we start building a budget, but, yeah.
How many do we need? I mean.
Uh, we probably disagree on the number.
I mean, I'm just saying.
I've talked with the supervisor, he feels like every bus, my, my, the supervisor, we kind of feel like there's five buses. That, the majority of these statistics.
Yeah, come out.
Sure.
Yeah, oh, I mean, I don't disagree with that. I just made the statement that I would love to see them on every bus, you know. But, you know, absolutely, the more troublesome buses is where we need them.
Right.
You know.
Start there anyway.
Exactly, you know.
Well, they will be having training, just like our bus drivers do on how to handle disciplinary issues and stuff like that.
That was our intention.
And I, I agree with Beth too. No, I agree with Beth too. I mean, we can not do anything for fear of liability too. But, but, you know, ultimately, I think, you know, we were just talking about the safety issue and all these, you know. So, you got liability on one hand, and you got the safety issue or the, you know, discipline issues on the other end. So, how do we strike the balance, you know? So, I, you know, we got the insurance issue covered. So, I, you know, the, the liability, I mean. In the state of Tennessee, you don't have to run a school bus even, you know, because, and we're taking on that whole liability just running school buses. So, you know, that's, I don't, I don't see it as an issue really, you know. I mean, you take a little bit of a risk, but you do that anyway, no matter what you do.
When we go back to our strategic plan, our number one goal is student outcomes. So, students are first. And what's gonna make our students safe? What's gonna make our employees safe? I mean, to me, that's, we're always saying that's, that's a priority for our system. It's a priority for our finances. What's gonna provide safety? And if I got a little kid with a knife on the bus, I want that extra pair of eyes. I don't mind if that point, if they actually touch the child. Let's get that knife out of their hand. So, that's just my opinion.
As far as the, the policy goes, um, might, I mean, that might be a topic for December in a full board. Y'all feel the same?
We have all the secret meeting, we can now, and, uh, next board meeting.
I don't think so.
Talk about it, yeah. Okay, so we can just put that on the agenda, yeah.
Well, I won't be there, so y'all peruse me.
We'll have to pull up the tape, we'll have to pull up the tape and refer to your comments from this night.
That's right. Go back and review the YouTube videos. All right, last item on the agenda is fundraising. And that is.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. During last week's principal meeting, we discussed the topic of fundraising again. These were the following takeaways from what was shared amongst our leadership group or principals. Our principals are not crazy about the amount of fundraising that goes on. Their comments, we hit the same businesses over and over. Where have we heard that? Yeah, in the board, there you go.
Right here.
Hey, yeah, well, hey, I'm telling you, your building level leadership expressed the same concerns. Two, the can, uh, cancellation of Bonnaroo hurt our fundraising this school year. For certain organizations that tie the fundraising. They canceled three days of it. It bit us a little bit this year. Um, past life, very envious of Coffee County schools. Because the organizations here got to take advantage of fundraising there. And I've always been a proponent of less is more, let's do beer things, but less of them. But anyway, we'll get to that. So, number two, Bonnaroo hurt us. Three, I posed the question, can we improve our current fundraises? Uh, fundraising practices. Their answer in consistent was yes. We can do less, but bigger, smarter fundraisers. Research says people generally like receiving something of value. The majority of the time, that means a pork butt, sweets, food, fruit. You can maximize the amount of fundraising minimized by taking those in. And people are gonna pay for those things if it is a good product. We all agree that we can cut back on our fundraising. But there's another side to the knife. There'll become a point where we start dropping programming for our children, and we need to figure out where that line is. We won't send DECA to National DECA. We won't take out of state ball trips. We won't be able to go participate or have this program or that program. Programming is going to take a hit. Uh, the facts, and you guys get the little one. I can't see the little one. I get the big one. Y'all have these in front of you, okay?
Little leg reading.
If, if you could, if you could gather all these things, and much like Mr. Coon has done with the bus report. I've taken this fundraiser, most schools take the high school away from, take them out. Our, not Raider Academy and on down, their fundraising is about seven to ten a year. It's what I've counted up and come, kind of grouped them, especially in our elementary schools. You have one with eleven, another one with thirteen, another one with eight. Our middle school ha- has about fourteen, and we just, you get in those number things. Our high school is going to a much different critter. That's not rocket surgery. They're gonna have a ton more, and when you break it down by like clubs. Certain clubs gets where their range of fundraising is. Seven to eleven, just like an athletic team or an elementary school. They're averaging just those same amounts. Now, I've also shared with you, there's a document when it kind of, that comes up with the price to participate. With our athletics, cost per sport, and it also had with our clubs for participation in clubs. And obviously, some sports are more expensive than others.
This is cost, like. This is not what the parents or, or the students are charged. This is the cost.
Cause, yeah. And there's a difference. I mean, for us, I don't know how many, and Ms. Holly spoke up, so I'm gonna use cheerleading. How many, uh, cheerleaders do we have?
About twenty-six, I believe.
Thousand dollars a pop to go to cheerleading camp, that's twenty-six thousand dollars. But, they go, we're pretty good at cheerleading.
I don't think it's a thousand dollars. I think what they showed us on the breakdown was about four hundred.
Okay, so to cut that number in half.
That's, that's the camp fee.
I think that's what it is. I, I vaguely remember seeing that.
But they're about seven to twelve, even if you break it down by sports, those numbers actually, believe it or not, shift lower. But our sports are also receiving school supplement as well. Does that make sense? But I mean, like, we have one organization that, I mean, we fly our kids to Florida and they take part in the national competition.
They go to California too.
Yeah, there you go, so. Can we do things better than what we're doing? Probably. Can we look at limiting? Yes, uh, the caveat to that is. If we're smarter about and doing less, uh, I mean, our principals agree with, with you all. I mean, we beat up the same people over and over, and they, they feel that too. But the cost is, we may not have some of the programming if it gets limited to a point. And I do know there are cer- certain school systems in our state, that part of their policy limits the amount that they have. But I also say, I also take in consideration the standard of living in those counties that have that. May be different than ours, up or down only. Does that make sense? But we're, we're talking about trying to come up with plans and really maximize. I mean, if you sell Boston Buds, nobody feels bad. You go home with a ton of meat. That's worth it. We just kind of got to think a little differently.
Well, that, that's my whole thing is, you know, I mean, you look on here and you got programs with, you know. But who's the different fundraisers? But their fundraisers aren't generating very much money. You know, to me, the burden needs to be put on them. Well, you can have fundraisers. You, you know, a, a limited number of fundraisers, but you need to start thinking outside the box, and you need to start having big hit fundraisers. You know, where you're making big money off of a few fundraisers versus, you know, having a fundraiser that generates twenty-five hundred dollars.
Smarter, not harder, you're exactly right.
Exactly, you know, I know, you know, I know, for instance, you know, some of the, the sports programs. And I think, you know, basketball is one of them, you know, they have, you know, they put on like preseason tournaments. And something like that. Well, you know, you're making money off of people from, out of your area. Out, out of your district, you know. The money's coming in from that. And I mean, you get a little bit of money if you charge for, you know, people to come in and watch the game. But for the most part, you're making money off of people outside of your district.
That sounds better, doesn't it?
It does. It's, it's kind of much. It does, it's got a much better taste to it, you know, it's, but I mean, you know, instances like that where they're making, you know, they're, they're getting big lick, um, fundraisers, you know, I mean, now, I know that, you know, a lot of the groups and stuff, you know, uh, you know, if you're not a sport, you can't hold a preseason tournament or anything, but, but there's other options, you know, like I say, I know when my son played baseball, that was, that was probably their main fundraiser every year was selling Boston butts. You know, I mean, made a good, you know, always done really good off of them.
Do less, smarter.
Yeah.
Make more, you know what baseball's big one is now?
I don't know, but making $40,000 or whatever it is.
Sell sheets?
Oh yeah.
Let me say something about baseball, really quick, because I don't know when I'm gonna get called out to go pick up from the student government thing at the school. So I don't know how much, I'm waiting on the call or the text, but, um, I've had some of the, the baseball parents talk about, um, that they are, they have to fundraise to, um, get the fence maintenance or whatever and the field maintenance, this is both high school and middle school. The field maintenance, they have to fundraise for, there's a dugout at the middle school that a parent actually volunteered themselves to pay to repaint the dugout. Um, they're taking baseball programs, and there may be other programs that are in this same boat, probably are, I just know the people that have talked to me, are doing kind of general maintenance type stuff that I would think would fall back on the system to take care of, field, get the field ready, paint the dugout, get the fence repaired or whatever, but they're, they're, from what I'm hearing, they're fundraising and paying for these things. I mean, isn't that the responsibility of the district? And, and in my mind, our policy, I believe, says that fundraising should not, should be supplemental, should not, um, should not be taking care of things, uh, the basics, the necessities, the things the system should be, and the district and the tax dollars should be taken care of, and, and fundraising should be more of an icing on the cake, yes, exactly, right there. Uh, six, let's see, what's the number on this? 2 dot 601, 2 dot 601, um, fundraising activities shall be authorized by the board and shall be for the purpose of supplementing funds for established school programs, not for supplementing funds which are the responsibility of the board. Some of these things that fundraisers are used for are things that we should be taking care of, in my opinion. The basics, the necessities, cheerleaders, parents, they're not even fundraising for them, the parents are providing palms. That, that, that's a basic, you can't cheerlead without palms. Um, banners on the wall and stuff like that. In my mind, fundraising should be for the extra, not for the basic necessities that we need to provide. Or if, in our minor sports are, and you know from the data you've pulled, are 95% if not more funded by the parents, because we as a district are not giving them hardly anything. Baseball team gets $1,900, you divide that by player, that means we give about 50 bucks a player and you parents are gonna pay for the rest of it.
Yep.
And so.
Probably been that way for a long time.
Probably has.
A long time, I know of 20 years.
I know we can't pay for all of it, but can we do better, can we provide more so that our parents?
We potentially could, but, I mean, it's gonna go back to like what I, my comment to Mr. Hansford, at some point, it, in friend.
Yes, it does. It's double sided, you're right.
What I want and what I need is defining that is not, it's blurry, it's all get out.
I agree, it's not simple.
I understand.
It's very complicated.
And, and as a former coach, I absolutely detested fundraising.
I think they all did.
And I wanted us to do big whops, take in big amounts of money and do less of it, less work, smarter, not harder. But, it also came at a price. We didn't have the Cadillac of uniforms, we dressed nice, but we didn't, you know, it came at a price and we made those choices. But, there were also some other things that were in place that assisted the program I was coaching that are no longer in place, nor are they in Coffee County, that were great financial, a great financial aid. At the time.
Real quickly, cause, cause I, I, trust me, I've got, I've got a child that plays baseball, I would love to give, I would love to do so much more for, for the baseball and softball, quickly. But, what, the way I've always done, because you've got to kind of, you gotta be careful on how you handle it and the way I've always gone about it is adequate, adequate to nice, uh, and, and that's what we have to provide, we, we have to, we need to provide that it's a nice setup, it's, it's adequate for, for the game and for it to be taken care of. Uh, there's been a lot of money being going through to, to baseball, softball, uh, basketball, football, a- all the way through. And, and I'll just start off with baseball, we, we, softball and baseball, we changed out the bleachers, put concrete down, the bleachers have been completely upgraded, really nice setup. Uh, baseball at the high school, changed out some of the fencing because it was in poor condition. Uh, the ball was rolling under, I've heard that there's one or two spots that still is, but we've, we've changed out some of the fencing so they took care of it. Uh, dugout at over at the, the middle school, we put up a new fence so that a kid, they're throwing it to first base and it doesn't knock a kid in the dugout in the head.
Sa- sanction.
Safety, changed out the, uh, netting at the middle school for both softball and baseball. Uh, we're doing the lights at all of our athletic fields, which is over $1.5 million. So there's, there's a lot of money that is being spent and, and ultimately, it is the place of the, the baseball or the sports, it doesn't matter which one, if they want more and a, better and above what they have, yeah, you're welcome to, to change and, and put more money into it from the boosters. But, but yes, we, the way I've always seen it, we need to provide adequate to nice for the game, to make sure that the game could go on, but do we have to, do we need to provide the very best of every, hey, if the board wants us to go that way, I, I'm ready to start. I got projects I could go pretty quick with.
I'm not suggesting the board provide the Cadillac, I'm, that's why I said the necessities are basic and then fundraising supplements.
So, so if we look at the gym at the, the high school, uh, we, they used to have the crank up top goals. Now they have, you just push a, put a key in, turn it and they go up, we put the safety, uh, straps on them. Uh, we put the, y'all know what you did with the bleachers, uh, take care of the bleachers. Back to the football and softball and baseball and all of those, we, we now get the, the robot that does the painting of the lines. That's being paid for by the school system and X number, amount of paint, then the boosters can go above, can be on on that, on, on what they need. Uh, so there's a, there's a lot of money being spent that people are not realizing and, and ultimately, more they do. Tennis, we painted the whole court, changed out the lights for the tennis, so it's, it's all taken care of. So there, there's, there are things being done. Football, uh, waiting room over here, there was, I hate to say it in this, this way, poor design with the bricking of it, it started to break off on one end, there was no expansion joints, we're getting ready to take care of that because it's dangerous and, and it's on our campus, we gotta get the, those things taken care of. Uh, the sidewalk that Scott talked about a couple of board meetings ago, we, we put the sidewalks in there and took care of that part. Uh, it's just, there's always things being done. It might not be that we're buying the high dollar uniforms or we're, we're taking the fence down and putting up a different type of fence or we're taking this down, we're making sure that adequacy is there and they have what they need to have a, a good game. So that, that's kinda where we are, but if y'all wanna change it, just let me know, cause we could go, it could go.
Believe you me, I have to pull him back, apparently we have a phone message from Caroline.
She's waiting.
What fence was it that need repaired, looks to me like that would be maintenance if it's a fence.
I know, um.
Yeah, yeah, what fence needs to be repaired, let me know and.
I, I can find out, I can find out.
Was that the ba- you said baseball?
At the middle school?
I don't know about that.
And like I said, that was about three to four years ago that there was 10 sections, I think it was on the outside that I had changed out so that we, we didn't have the problem, they were, balls was going underneath it, the whole first base line going from first base on down, that was all changed out because it, it just, it looked awful. Um, so there are things, and I told the, both coaches that the netting even around the high school, baseball, softball, we will take care of it because it's starting to get in bad shape, but we need to do a little bit more things, they, they just, they haven't gotten back with it on it, but there's a lot of stuff.
I'm going to tune in on YouTube. I'm sorry, this is a bad time, I have to leave.
I hope you don't have a chance, I hope we're gone.
Let me know if there's something that is actually, a product that we, that is ours that we need to take care of, definitely let me know.
I will, I will, thank y'all so much.
Yeah, unless there's anything else on fundraising, where.
Well, I, I just got one, one question and I guess this would be more of a question for the, for the coach or whatever, but, you know, looking at the, at the list that you gave us, uh, with the last board meeting on the, uh, per player cost, you know, looking down through here and, you know, I understand the, you know, a, a lot of them, you know, there's such a huge fluctuation in some of them, but, um, you know, one that really stood out to me was girls' basketball, I mean, that's almost $6,000 per player.
Right.
And there's 15 players, you know, and then you compare it to boys' basketball and they're at $2,650 per player. What in the world generates the difference between that, because that's.
Standards, I, I, you, you got me.
I mean, that's, I mean, just me looking at that, that's ridiculous. Uh, I, I mean, I just don't see the, the need in that, but I mean, because like I say, we're looking at boys' basketball at $2,650 and girls' basketball is at, well, $5,975. I mean, that's.
Double.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a huge difference and, and I mean, I guess that's more of a, a question for the coach.
Yeah.
But, I, I mean, that's, you know.
I think the, the girls' team has been so successful in the past that they, they've fundraised for a lot of different tournaments. You know, and things like that, that, that I guess fundraisers took care of expensive.
Well, the fundraisers are the parents because the district sure didn't pay for it, cause you look over here and you can see what they got from, from the district, but.
Well, I hope that information was helpful, I appreciate our athletic directors and our, um, our, um, high school secretary, Ms. Marter, she got all this information, uh, together and I appreciate her hard work in doing that.
I don't know, I wanna know about the kiss the pig.
I just, that happened and I've just missed the activity and I was kinda ticked off, I didn't get there.
I bet you, I could see the disappointment on your face.
It was.
And blood juice bags, that's kinda like, okay, what, what is that all about?
Yeah.
I don't know, but, well, we talked, you talked a little bit about raffles and stuff too and how you can do those legally and.
Well, that was a group that, uh, I sat with from another district and they spoke about. A rebel top, but they did get rebel top activities.
And that might be a way to do bigger, bigger activities too, if we can get, we'd have to be a, so, we could, we can get approved by the state legislator to do raffle activities, which might be a way to do bigger fundraisers too.
And that comes with a fee, I understand from my friends at lunch the other day, that fee has, uh, is supposed to decrease, but there's a lot going on and it's also my understanding you have to apply for approval for that a year out of.
A year in advance?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, so if you applied for it now, it would be ready for the.
This, December, December 26th.
Is that something the board would have to approve that we?
I like to talk to the school system a little bit more in their leadership. Cause I only got the salad with them, I didn't get to eat the main meal, I ate that, we all revered.
Yeah, that's right.
Before I got transferred back.
He was doing meals at two different tables.
Yeah, I know that you can apply with the, uh, gaming commission to get an, an exemption and it's not, you know, it's not that hard, but without that exemption, it's illegal to.
Right.
To do a game of chance, you know, the, the, you know. And the thing is, you know, looking at it, going back, it's, you, you got, you know, ever since I was in school, everybody had cake walks.
Yeah.
Cake walks is a game of chance, unfortunately, it's, it's gambling.
It is. It, it, it just kills me though, now I find that interesting and I'm respectful of the laws, but, I mean, we live in a state with a lottery and, but yet we're not gonna allow people to have a cake walk.
An educational lottery.
An educational lottery at that which makes it twice as.
Redundant.
Yes.
I think we are done, stand adjourned, so, take Mr. Davis.